Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 12th, 2025 Special Study Session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Madrone excused tonight. So before we turn it over to the presenters, I do have a few words that I'd like to share just to frame our conversation for this evening. So the last time that this topic of the municipal court's transition came before council, we had tasked Assistant City Manager to dig into some of the things that we felt needed to have a better understanding before making a decision about the municipal court, public defense, or prosecution transitioning from its current location. Specifically, we were interested in the question of whether or not this council chambers could be retrofitted to be a space that the council and the court could share long-term and on a permanent basis. That's the conversation that we're having tonight. We'll get straightforward and very technical look through our presentation tonight from the Assistant City Manager as we look at the physical, structural changes that might be required to create a permanent shared space from those with expertise in the structural and physical space changes. We also asked Debbie to invite the county to this study session so that we could hear directly from them on their programs and services that they offer at Thurston County. So all of this information from tonight that will be presented to council will take and use for consideration in our decision at a later date. So tonight's study session is an opportunity for the council to learn more about the specific questions that we posed to the Assistant City Manager in our previous meeting. And just a reminder that there is no public comment tonight. This is a study session; it is not a regular business meeting. So with that, I'd like to get started with our only agenda item for tonight, which is to discuss the potential transition of the municipal court and related programs to Thurston County, and we have our Assistant City Manager, Debbie Sullivan, presenting this evening. Hi, Debbie.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam and council members. For the record, Debbie Sullivan, Assistant City Manager, and on April 22nd, staff presented three options for transitioning municipal court and the related programs and services from 900 Plum Street, commonly known as the Lee Creighton Justice Center. Staff also asked you to consider a resolution directing staff to negotiate an interlocal agreement with Thurston County for judicial services, jail alternatives, and supervised probation services if a decision was made to transition to the county at a future public meeting. At that same meeting, you asked me to provide council with more information regarding the options before you, and this study session is a result of that request. So with me tonight is Fran Idy, the city's project engineer, Bill Valdez with KMB Architects, Frankie Peters, the Thurston County Court Executive Officer, and Judge Myers, District Court Judge. As you know, this is a hard place to be. We hold our court and the employees in high regard, and absent the significant budget issues facing council, we wouldn't be here. Having said that, it is my hope that at the conclusion of the study session, you have the information you need to provide staff direction on whether to pursue building out council chambers in 108 State Avenue, or to continue moving forward with an interlocal agreement with the county. We have heard from employees. Living in uncertainty is difficult and stressful, so providing them with clarity is one step toward alleviating some anxiety. The purpose of tonight's study is to review how 108 State Avenue and council chambers could be used as a permanent solution to maintain municipal court and related programs, learn about Thurston County District Court programs and services, and brief the council on the interlocal agreement negotiations with Thurston County to provide judicial services. For those who are new to the conversation, I'll provide a brief background on why we're here tonight and the decision before council. I'll start with the Lee Creighton Justice Center, located at 900 Plum Street. It was built in 1966 and served as City Hall until 2011. It was repurposed at that time to a justice center and housed municipal court, prosecution, public defense, as well as the municipal jail. And in 2017, a major courtroom renovation was completed, anchoring it as a justice center. Two years later, in 2019, a routine facility condition assessment was commissioned. It identified over 12 million deficiencies and stated that serious consideration should be given to replace the facility. As a result, the city created a steering committee, hired an architectural firm, and developed a justice center master plan, which wrapped up in 2022. The feasibility estimated project cost in 2023 ranged from $89 to $94 million. Of that estimate, $32 million included the cost to replace the jail. This information was instrumental in the decision to close the jail in 2023. To rebuild this facility, even without the jail, the cost would be north of $50 million, with a debt service of around $4 million a year. When island enterprises approached the city, expressing interest to enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement, it was an opportunity to consider a better and higher use for this property. The city entered the agreement in January 2024 and immediately got to work with court, prosecution, and public defense staff to find a path forward. The intent was to relocate them and maintain them as part of the city. As we looked at options, we were grounded in two guiding principles. One was council's commitment to reimagining public safety, and two, the need to achieve long-term budget sustainability. Regarding reimagining public safety, our attention is on goal number four, which is to reduce the number of individuals who connect initially and repeatedly with law enforcement and the criminal justice system. The strategies included: develop and expand pre-arrest and pre-booking diversion programs, offer restorative practices and transformative justice options, and expand the availability and use of therapeutic courts. The second guiding principle is council's goal of achieving long-term budget sustainability. In 2025, the city council faced an $11.8 million gap. The budget was reduced by $7.7 million, resulting in 27 FTE cuts, and the use of $4.1 million of fund balance to close the gap. That gap remains as we go into developing the 2026 budget. So finding a solution that is anchored in our values and addresses our fiscal challenges is the outcome we're trying to achieve. The first option presented was to lease commercial space, which we genuinely believed was going to be the long-term solution. This work started in early 2024, and over the course of several months, our project engineer worked closely with court, prosecution, and public defense staff and KMB architects to design the space to meet their operational needs. Once the preliminary design was complete, the estimate totaled $7 million. Given the other expenses associated with transitioning off the site and the revenue received from the sale of the property, there remained $3.2 million that would need to be funded on top of an $815,000 annual lease. The increase to the operating budget would exceed $1 million. At that time, the city pivoted to focusing on using city-owned buildings. The buildings in play are City Hall, specifically council chambers, which would double as a courtroom, and 108 State Avenue, which does not have a permanent tenant, and it would be used to house court staff, probation, prosecution, and public defense. Again, the project engineer and architect worked closely with court, prosecution, and public defense staff to configure both spaces to meet their operational needs. The estimate between the two buildings is $7 million, the same as for the commercial lease space. Although we wouldn't have an ongoing lease payment, we would need to sell debt to cover the remaining $3.2 million needed for the tenant improvements, which would add approximately $260,000 a year for 20 years to cover the debt service. What we shared with you tonight is a more detail of how these spaces could be laid out to accommodate municipal court, prosecution, and public defense. If this option is not a permanent solution, the cost for a new building, again, would be as high as $50 million with an annual debt service payment of $4 million, or the city could choose to lease space at an estimated cost of $1 million a year. The third option is for the city to retain prosecution, victims' assistance, domestic violence assistance, public defense, and transition judicial services to Thurston County. With this option, we would still renovate 108 State Avenue for prosecution, victims' assistance, domestic violence assistance, and public defense. I'm saying that a lot. This is estimated at $3.8 million, $1.7 million less than option two. Between the $8.2 million from the proceeds of the sale of the property and $710,000 of capital funds, there is a need to sell debt to fund the one-time tenant improvements, and the overall impact to the general fund is approximately $80,000 a year. So that concludes my background, and I'm ready to launch into the topics for tonight's study session.
And Debbie, just before you move on, you're okay with questions throughout the presentation?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I should have mentioned that earlier.
Yes, thank you.
So council direction. On April 22nd, council asked me to follow up on specific items, including sharing more information with you regarding the feasibility and impacts of using those two buildings as a long-term permanent solution to maintain municipal court, contacting the city of Tukwila to learn how they successfully shared space, collaborating with municipal court staff to hear their ideas and to plan for a potential transition, and developing an employee transition plan. So basically, we have been on two parallel paths. One, planning for a transition, and two, finding a path forward to maintain municipal court and all the related programs. So tonight's study session is to follow up on this direction, give you an opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation, and to ask questions. Immediately following the council meeting, we got to work. The city manager and I met on Friday, April 25th, following the council meeting with the judge and the court administrator to listen and talk about our approach moving forward. Miriam Olson and I met with the county on April 29th to start the conversation about transition. This was an informative and productive meeting. We learned about each other's programs and services, how they compare, and how our residents can access their services. We also talked through the logistics of transitioning and a potential timeline. Three, I want to thank the court administrator with the city of Tukwila, Trish Kinlow, who spent quite a bit of time with me, Fran Idy, and Miriam Olson on April 30th, talking through how they successfully shared space with their city council. Next, our HR Director, Manny Bosser, in conjunction with union leadership, has met with or scheduled meetings with all court and probation employees. These meetings focus on hearing our employees' interests, their needs, wants, and worries. A transition plan informed by what we're hearing from employees is being developed. Fran Idy, our project engineer, also re-engaged with court, prosecution, and public defense to confirm their operational requirements around 108 State Avenue and council chambers. And finally, we have been actively negotiating with the county, and I will brief you on the agreement later in tonight's presentation. With that, I will turn it over to Fran Idy, the city's project engineer, who has taken the lead on the planning and design of the facility components of this transition. As a way of background, I want to thank Fran for coming out of retirement to help us with this project. Out of 25 years of city employment, she served as our city engineer for 12 of those years overseeing capital planning, design, and construction. So I'd like to invite Fran Idy and Bill Valdez from KMB Architect up to the table.
Thank you, Debbie. It's nice to be here this evening, and thank you. I will actually be handing the presentation off to Bill Valdez, but before I do that, I wanted to go back over some of the work that we've done. So it may be a little bit redundant, but I think it's important in setting the stage for moving forward and what you're going to see. The city contracted with KMB April 2nd of 2024, and they jumped right in, collaborating with the court staff over the course of nine meetings held between March 18th and May 3rd. Those meetings, which started as the contract was being finalized, were for the purpose of capturing the current and future programming needs, and the information was used as a basis for developing design options and at that time for the lease option. Over the course of the next few months, then, the layouts were developed, the cost estimates calculated, and negotiations with the town square owners happened. But ultimately, it was determined that the lease option was not what we wanted to pursue. So we pivoted away from that in October of '24, and then met with the court staff to strategize an agenda for a relocation plan kickoff meeting held November 19th. And during that meeting, we redefined the staff needs, addressing proximity, given the potential that we would be doing business out of two separate buildings seven blocks apart. We also identified pros and cons of the courtroom/council chamber shared-use space. A meeting on November 26th then focused on community court, the court and the service providers' space needs, office space, and location options. KMB then used that information gathered at these meetings and subsequent conversations to further refine the options and develop the cost estimates. And as we've heard, on April 22nd, council directed staff to enter into the negotiations with Thurston County regarding judicial services, and we followed up with the other jurisdictions regarding their experience in using the shared spaces. I reviewed the information provided by Neil Weiss with Edmunds Municipal Court. They had provided a virtual tour of their facility, and that information was very informative. And I was also, as Debbie mentioned, involved in the discussion with Tukwila on April 30th about their experiences. So out of curiosity, I reached out to a few other jurisdictions: Mercer Island, OMAC, and East Wenatchee, kind of a variety of places, different sizes, different locations. My takeaway from reflecting on the information provided and the conversations held was that each jurisdiction's needs are unique to their particular situation, including, but not limited to, population, building space designated for the shared use, and whether it was designed that way, or it was modified to accommodate, as well as number and type of cases handled. So while it was very helpful to have these conversations, it really reinforced that we need to look closely at what our situation is, what resources we have available, and how we can possibly make the space work. Then, May 1st and 2nd, we re-engaged with court, prosecution, and public defense staff to review the notes and the findings from our November 19th meeting and subsequent conversations. Minor adjustments and additions and refinements were made, and this updated information was then used to develop what you'll see here in a moment. By way of those who may not be familiar with KMB, I'd like to share a brief overview of the work that we've collaborated on over the years. Most recently, as was mentioned, we contracted with KMB in 2020 to kick off the City of Olympia Justice Center Master Plan, and that finalized in October of 2022. They were chosen for this work because of their expertise in designing court facilities, as well as their familiarity with our own particular buildings, operations, and staff. They bring this experience into the work that they're doing for us right now, developing the designs and estimates that have informed the decision-making to date. Their expertise gives me confidence that together with city staff, we have a team that understands what the city of Olympia needs in a facility to operate a municipal court in a way that is efficient and effective. And one more thing I'd like to do is to thank the project team for working to identify, plan for, and evaluate all the options shared with council for relocating municipal court and the related projects. That team includes Randy Wesselman, Public Works Project Manager, Eli Cole, Facilities Manager, Bill Valdez with KMB, and from court, Miriam Olson, Rowan Fairchild, Brianna Pinkston, Diane Whaley, Jamie Herrer, Leanne Beenick, and Monica Schneider. That said, I'd like to pass it off to Bill.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Bill Valdez. I'm a partner at KMB Architects, and I have dedicated over the last 25 years of my career to judicial design and civic design of buildings. I lead our city and county market sectors, so this is a project typology that I'm fairly familiar with. So again, that being said, really, we've organized this presentation to, again, answer the question of can the council chambers be converted into a municipal court, and what are some of the capital investments, as well as physical modifications that would need to be done to be able to meet either best practices for operations of a municipal court, or what's required by law? So that is how we've approached the project and the question at hand. So again, the main requirements that we're focused on is making sure that we're doing the best utilization of both City Hall and 108 State Avenue to house municipal court operations, looking at the dual use of City Hall and the council chambers in particular for council meetings, as well as municipal court operations. Again, looking through the lens of what is required as law, as well as best practices for municipal court requirements, and looking at this as being this is a permanent solution, not a temporary solution. So the areas that we're really looking at and focusing on is, again, the two different buildings, City Hall and 108 State Avenue, looking at best practices. You'll be hearing a little bit more information about conference room needs and utilization since part of the solution is really looking at using some of these meeting spaces, which include conference room 112, as well as obviously the council chambers, and then really looking at safety and security, which is really the key component on court design, and making sure that we're looking at how people, all the participants, the public, are coming into the facility and leaving the facility, how we're screening everyone coming into municipal court, as well as the final component is really looking at technology. What is required for municipal court to operate, and what is currently already in place for council? So that being said, again, if you have any questions, please ask them, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Municipal court services. So these are the different components that we need to be able to accommodate within the two buildings. Municipal court administration, municipal court, which would have to be able to support both your typical court docket, as well as a jury trial docket. Community court, probation services, public defender, and prosecuting attorney. In each one of these slides, you'll see that we list best practices, or essentially something that we've kind of noticed that maybe not is in line with best practices. So again, best practice for providing these types of spaces and services is to not have the public defense coordinator and the prosecuting attorney located in the same spot because they are serving a different clientele. That being said, knowing that the public defender typically meets with their clientele here, or wherever municipal court is at, and not typically at their offices is how they've been currently operating, but there's still a potential for that clientele to interact. Municipal court administration and municipal court are not going to be co-located together. As Fran indicated, they're seven blocks away, so there's some inefficiencies of moving staff back and forth in between court docket. And then, community court located with probation services and the municipal courtroom. Ideally, they would be in the same spot. Obviously, they would be separated, again, because the municipal courtroom has been historically used for providing other program services through community court. So we'll focus first on 108 State Avenue, and since that's actually the more straightforward solution that we'll be dealing with. So the programs that would actually be located within 108 State is the municipal court administration, community court and community court services, probation services, public defender, and prosecuting attorney. As I indicated before, there are several things associated with locating these services at 108 State that are not in line with best practices. A, you know, municipal court administration is seven blocks away from the courtroom versus actually being adjacent or adjoining to it. Public defense coordinator and prosecuting attorney's office being in the same space and actually on the same floor with a potential clientele interacting with each other. And community court being away from municipal courtroom, which sometimes they have used that space for other meetings and other services. So the next two slides is really looking at how 108 State Avenue would actually be modified. A lot of the existing spaces and rooms are reutilized, so there's an efficiency there that we looked at, but still, there is some capital renovations and modernizations that would have to occur within the building to be able to occupy it for these programs. So on the first floor, the light yellow color space is for community court. All the blue areas is really primarily public circulation areas, so that's the stairs and the entry points into the building. The lighter colored blue there in the middle is municipal court clerk's offices and desk spaces. Court administration, so the judge is located in the bottom left-hand corner in the brown space, and then everything that is gray is really like the electrical room and fire riser room and mechanical room, so those are like infrastructure to the building. Going up to the second floor is where we end up locating C Prosecutor's Office, which is on the far left-hand side. In the bottom right-hand corner is probation, and the top right-hand corner is the defense coordinator's office, with the dark green space, the existing restrooms for male and female, so that's centralized to the building. So everyone up here on the second floor would need to have access to those restrooms. So as you can see, we've been able to provide some solutions to be able to keep these different departments and services separate, but there's still potential for interaction in the main circulation hallways, access to the elevator, as well as access to the main restrooms on that level.
Bill?
Yes?
I have a question. So you mentioned that is not best practice. Could you speak to like why it's not best practice?
Yes. So the prosecuting attorney's office and the public defense coordinator, they represent the two different participants within court proceedings. And typically, you want that interaction to only occur within the courtroom. So with them potentially being in the same building, you might have a victim going and meeting, or, you know, at the prosecutor's office, giving a statement, and then coming out of that office and interacting with a defendant that would be actually at the defense coordinator's office. Like I said, the defense coordinator is typically meeting with their clientele somewhere here at the courtroom, but there could be a potential that they have to meet with someone there, and then all of a sudden, they could either be interacting with a witness or with a victim that might be at the prosecutor's office. So it's that interaction is what you're most concerned about. So then, next, we'd be looking at how the city hall would be modified or changed to be able to have the shared use of the council chambers for both council, as well as for municipal court. So for the municipal court, these are some of the design criteria or the operational needs that we had conversations with all the staff about. So as far as gallery seating, which is public seating within the courtroom, the current need was expressed to be around 50 or 60 need was expressed to be around 50 or 60 occupants with a future growth and a future need of around 75 to 80 occupants. We need to be able to have a location for the judge's bench. We need to be able to have a position for the court clerk, which would be in close proximity to the judge, have a defendant table and a prosecutor's table, be able to have a witness table or a witness podium provided within the space. The courtroom needs to be fully VTC, so video teleconference capable, and we'll get into some of the technology that would need to be provided a little bit later. Need to be able to have a judge's robing room or at least a space where the judge can come over and actually put on his, on his or her robe, since their offices are going to be at 108 State, they need to be able to come here and be prepared for court, as well as a space for judicial staff to be able to go if there happens to be recess or breaks and not having to run seven blocks away if the, a break in the docket might be only five, 10, 15, 30 minutes just for efficiency. And then, a requirement is that judicial staff needs to be able to have access to a secured restroom. So, that is because you do not want to have judicial staff, a court clerk, or the judge going into a public restroom after they just went through a sentencing or something of either a defendant or a family member who observed something like that occurring. So, we don't want to create a, an opportunity for something like that to be able to happen where judicial staff might be harmed by some other participant within the courtroom due to court proceedings that occurred just prior to that. So, that's the rationale behind that. So, again, best practices are to have a secured route for any in custody defendant. So, we haven't, with any of these plans, really worked all that out. There is definitely some potential for that because there is some holding cells and spaces within the police department, so maybe there could be some ways to be able to route from there into this space, but pathway hasn't been fully documented yet as far as that goes. A need for a jury box, which would be, have six jurors plus one alternate, so be able to, something sized to be able to accommodate seven jurors. And being able to have a jury deliberation room where the jury could be able to go and deliberate needs to be provided in addition to the jury box. This is a best practice is to actually have a barrier wall in between the public seating or the gallery area and the litigation space, so where the attorney's tables is located at, just to be able to provide a level of security and safety for all the participants within court proceedings. And that's what we've shown in, in the plans. There are examples within the state of Washington of courtrooms that do not have a security wall separating those two spaces, but the vast majority of courtrooms do have a barrier in there, again, to be able to provide a level of security for all participants. And then, be able to, and we just wanted to be able to point out because of the gallery seating that we indicated above, when we, we're looking at how the council chambers can actually be laid out and with these modifications, we do feel that you could probably fit still 80 to 90 seats within the gallery area, so we should be able to meet that gallery seating within the space. It could be tight, but you could still be able to do that. So, we did want to be able to point that out. As far as courtroom standards, so, again, the, a big part of the focus is on trial court security. And this happens to be a list of, based off of the Washington State Court Guidelines of what should be provided and what services should be provided with regard to security within a courtroom. Again, a lot of this is focused on, you know, we need to make sure that we are screening, doing weapon screening for anybody that's coming into the courtroom, and that's really a key of a lot of the modifications that you end up seeing that would have to be done to City Hall to be able to have screening and making sure that no one is bypassing screening throughout the process. There needs to be emergency notifications, there needs to be secure parking, as well as specialized locking mechanisms on doors for a level of security. And a lot of this we'll be able to kind of point out later in the presentation as well. So, we started really looking at the existing infrastructure and the existing floor plan of City Hall. This is a modeled rendering of the existing space with some modifications incorporated to be able to convert it into a municipal court. Really, the key components of this, and we'll be able to get into more when we go to the other floor plans, is creating a screening area, which you end up seeing on the left-hand part of the screen mainly in this hallway that's right back behind you. And then being able to control from that screening area all the way into the council chambers when it is used for municipal court. So, everyone that is screened, we know that they're either leaving the building or they're staying here and they're not able to bring any weapons into the courtroom. So, that other modification that you end up seeing is out in the lobby area, which is putting in some private meeting booths, which is, again, another best practice is to be able to provide whether they're attorney-client meeting rooms, victim waiting rooms, and attorney meeting spaces that those individuals can be able to meet privately and not have to be in a public hallway or in a public lobby to be able to have those sensitive conversations within. And so, those are two of the, the kind of major modifications that we'd have to be able to make to have the operations plan work successfully for the conversion to a municipal court. Yep?
Yes. Councilmember Green, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Bill, towards the bottom in the middle where it says, I think, probation and clerk desk, is that just a desk or is that a?
Yeah. So, that could be done as being a simple piece of furniture or it could actually be a built-in structure. Either way would work. Talking with court staff, really, all they need was a public service desk or location, so one for probation and one for the clerk's office to be able to interact with the public. And so, that's all that will be. There's a couple of other renderings that actually show it a little bit more detail, but it could be done, something done fairly simply with, you know, a piece of furniture or it can be done something more like this where it's actually built in.
Okay. Two, two quick questions. One is, how do you accommodate for jury and how often do we need that? And then, talk to me about a one-way exit to a public restroom and how that works.
Yes. Two great questions. So, one conversation that we have had is the possibility of using this, the staff table over here and being able to possibly use that as a jury box, since our original plan was to be able to have witness station over here, which we could possibly use actually this, the mobile public comment table for that. So, it, how it's laid out in the courtroom actually works pretty well. They're getting kind of far apart, but it could be workable. The larger kind of issue is how would the juror, jury get from this location to a deliberation room, since they would be brought in and released while all the other participants are already within the courtroom? So, there, there's some logistics that would still have to get worked out, even if we did say, oh, well, we'll be able to use maybe conference room 112 as a deliberation room and this space as a jury box, but they're now on the opposite sides of the courtroom exactly. So, we'd have to be able to kind of work through that, but that would be one scenario that we could possibly make work. It could be challenging because, again, you know, ADA accessibility and a path we'd need to work out, but, yeah, it might be a challenge that we can accommodate. The second question that you said, a one-way access door, that's a very difficult one. So, it'd probably be a modification to that door, essentially saying that it would be one-way, so essentially, you go through it and it would be removing the door hardware from the outside of it so someone can't pull it and be able to come in, since security is going to be over here. We need to make sure that the court bailiff or court security is making sure that no one is actually coming in through that door because we don't know if they've been screened or not. So, that door in particular would be a challenging solution to try to treat that with some form of door hardware and modifications to that door to be able to make it work because, again, that would be the only path for someone to be able to go out to be able to use those public restrooms that are currently in place. But we don't want someone who's not gone through security to come in through that door.
Then they have to go outside to get back into the courtroom.
Then, once they go out, they would have to circulate back around and go back through security again to be able to make sure that everybody's been screened, even though, because we don't know if someone's been screened, so, yeah, that's the difficult part.
There's a laser pointer on that if you want to.
Yeah. Okay. That's the right thing. Okay. All right. So, then, moving to floor plan, this would be for the council chambers functioning as, for council meetings, that there's, again, you'd still have the dais that would be in place, there'd be, you know, potential to be able to have a security wall which would be bisecting the space. Again, it would be something that'd be more permanent in place. To be able to create that separation, we'd still have access around the end of the wall for public comment to be able to access the public comment podium. The barrier that we create by having the attorney-client or victim-witness waiting rooms out in the lobby would, they'd be there essentially permanently and creating that barrier and that separation, so it does split the lobby into two halves essentially. This alarm door that would have to be alarmed and secured when it is for municipal court, again, that's a primary entrance point when this is being used for, for council meetings. So, how is, so, we'd have to figure out how that door and how that hardware can possibly be turned on to function and act for one use and then be switched over for another use. The probation and clerk's public service desk, whether that is permanent or whether it is something that is more furniture, would be in place still. And then, we have the security screening area, which, again, that could be something that could be moved out of the way when it's not used for municipal court. And then, up and operational when it is being used for municipal court. The judge's robing office is really what we're looking at for the meeting room 112, so if the, is not being used by the judge for, or judicial staff for municipal court, it could still be used potentially as a meeting room for council functions, so. But, as you can see, there are some physical construction that needs to be made and in place permanently while it's for a shared use.
Bill, we have a question. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
A very quick one. So, where the judge's robing office would be, I noticed that there's going to be a door missing and a new door installed. That new door goes in, currently, I think, on the other side of that wall is a whole bunch of bathrooms that staff. Do you'd have to rearrange all that on the other side, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we would have to do some modifications there. So, the, and the door going out into the hallway, again, that would be, either we can secure and deadbolt and secure that door when it's being used for a judge's office and then be able to unlock it or unsecure it when it's wanting to be used for a meeting room again. So, there's, a lot of this has to do with door technology and door hardware to be able to make these things work.
Okay. Councilmember Green.
It didn't occur to me on the last slide, but looking at this slide, to go back to Councilmember Cooper's earlier comment about the one-way exit to the restroom, so they wouldn't need to just go outside and come back in, they'd need to go outside, back to the end of the building and come in that door. Am I seeing that correctly?
That is correct.
Councilmember Gilman.
So, I, I just want to double-check. When Councilmember Vanderpoel was asking about a door that would go into where the employee locker room is, is that a closet or is that a door in the judge's robing office there?
That closet's already there.
Yeah, that, this closet, this is, closet is still, is already there.
Good, good.
Yep. Great questions. So, then, this is really what it would be kind of looking at and functioning as a municipal court. So, again, we'd have the two attorney, attorney tables there in the litigation area, we'd have a witness stand, pretty much located where it currently is right now. We'd be able to have the judge and the clerk up at the dais. We'd be able to use conference room 112 hopefully as a judge's robing room or a meeting room for judicial staff. We do have access to the staff, staff break area, which there is a kitchenette and a toilet back there, so we're able to provide access to secured restrooms back there for judicial staff. We have the public gallery seating area. Again, we need to be able to keep the staff table still in place. And then, we have those attorney-client conference rooms, meeting rooms. They're creating that secured barrier between, essentially, the two lobbies. They're in place.
Councilmember Cooper.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions. Where do you rebuild the staff break area for the rest of the first floor while it's being used during, as a court?
Again, that's a great question. We have not.
I'm hearing third floor, just for those who are listening.
Yeah, third floor. So, then, we just, so you can visually see in a couple of different ways from, rather than just the floor plans, we created a couple of renderings so you can actually see what it will, would look like as a courtroom. So, again, that secured barrier is a partial light wall, essentially kind of separating the public seating area from the litigation area. You see the tables for the different attorneys representing the different parties. You, we have a witness station that we've created and we have a judge and a clerk stationed sitting up at the dais. This swinging around, just a different view to the left, the existing council staff desk. Again, there's been some conversations, possibly that could be used as a jury box or jury location, but we'll have to kind of continue to work with staff on the viability of that as well as the pathway and the flow to be able to get to a jury deliberation room.
Bill, we have another question. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
A lot of technical questions about this. So, the, the public comment podium, witness stand, is that a locked, would that be a locked piece of furniture or would that, would that be movable?
We were kind of anticipating we'd be able to just, be able to use that. We did initially look at possibly having just another piece of furniture, but then we're like, where is it going to be stored? What are we going to be able to do? Again, all we need is literally a place for a witness to be able to sit down that could be ADA accessible for them to be able to give testimony. So, that meets the need. There is some concerns about visibility, obviously, with all the other equipments there, but we potentially can actually work through that, we think. So, again, one of the bigger changes that you'd end up seeing is the big wide-open lobby that you have at the front entrance to the changes that you'd end up seeing is the big wide-open lobby that you have at the front entrance to City Hall and how that would be, how that would change. So this is a view at the top right-hand corner that you'd see is within the non-secured side, so essentially the city hall side. So you have the public service counter that's there. You'd see the backside of those meeting pods that would be put there and in place. And in the distance, you see essentially this door which is providing that access out to those public restrooms. So again, it looks fairly generous. It looks like the space is fairly big. But when you go out there and you start walking it, it will be, it will be tight on both sides of it.
Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I really appreciate the additional renderings, other than the floor plan, that really helps us sort of be in it. I'm curious about sound.
So sound in between the two spaces? So again.
Correct. And then also, my understanding is, you know, I'm thinking about a bustling day in court and folks coming in wanting to talk about, you know, whatever city service needs are. And so then I think about not only the front desk, but then also the courtroom. Folks possibly getting processed through security. And then those pods, right, those are what, like four-person pods at best, probably usually two people? So if you could just talk about how would we, if we were to go this route, sound considerations?
You bet. So that is definitely a bit of a concern. So again, we did want, not want, we did not want to make major modifications to that lobby. So the pods are in place to create that secured barrier while also providing the meeting space. And like you said, it's up to four people in each one of those pods. So it'd be, you know, two people, up to four people potentially being able to meet in those spaces. The pods are not full height. So essentially in the lobby, there is shared area between the two halves. So noise will transfer in between the two spaces. And that is done in a way so those pods, we can just have vents to be able to share the lobby air for heating and cooling to be able to get into the pods. The pods do have a ceiling in them, so there would be lights in there as well as there'd be power and data if needed into each of those pods. But we don't have to make any modifications to the city hall's HVAC, the heating and cooling, within that lobby by using these. And that was something that we really thought was important from a cost savings as well as just functionality standpoint.
Councilmember Green. One second. Mayor Protem has more.
Yeah, so is there and I'm sorry, maybe I, maybe, I think that almost to the answer to my question, but that still leaves me sitting with, what about the sound? So is it, what considerations for sound are there? I mean, would there be, you know, are you feeling confident that there would be different material that we could put up so that, I mean, these are potentially like very sensitive conversations that are happening and we want everyone that walks in, whether it's at the front desk for some sort of city service or it's their day in court or they're, you know, viewing their loved one, whatever it is, to have the dignity, right, of coming into the municipal building and doing whatever it is that they need done? And so could you share a little bit more?
Yeah, again, I, with those type of really, those private conversations, whether it's with attorney, meeting with their client or a victim or a witness, being able to meet with the prosecuting attorney before they go in to give testimony or just family members in a difficult situation, wanting to be able to get out of the lobby space. That's really what these meeting, these pods are for. So they are acoustically insulated, so they would be able to go in there and have those conversations in private. And so the, those conversations and the sound is not going to be transmitted out into the public lobby area or in the secured lobby area of municipal court. But yeah, there will be sound transmitting between the two lobbies, obviously. But because we're providing these other meeting rooms, hopefully there is not a need to be able to have sensitive conversations or communication out in the secured lobby of the municipal court side that might, again, transmit over to the public side. Yeah, there, there will be noise transmitting between the two. There's, there's nothing that we can do to be able to do that without really totally separating those two spaces, which, you know, conversations that we had with staff as well as with the court staff was not a path that we wanted to be able to take.
Councilmember Green.
Yeah. So looking at the secured side of the lobby and those common seating areas and tables, they're on the outside of what's right now, those big doors, does that mean those are always closed? Because that's not, has that become more of a permanent wall?
There, so again, those doors would be closed whenever municipal court would be in operations. The intent of those tables and those, just those seating areas is, again, there's a lot of people that are coming in for large dockets. They might not all want to be waiting within the courtroom. So typically you end up, best practice, providing additional seating out in the hallway for them to be able to go in. So the envision is those doors would be closed from municipal court. They could be reopened when it's functioning for council. I think that answered your question.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Bill?
Yes.
So, okay, I hear you say it could be open for the function of council, but if you could, there's a lot of moving pieces here.
Yes.
So if you could help me, I'm thinking of the last time we've had a crowded chambers, the most recent time was the Workers' Bill of Rights. And there were 200 people that showed up that night and those doors were open and there were people covering the lobby as well as the chambers. So if we were to use this space for both purposes, can you walk me through the logistics of preparing for an evening like that for the council?
Yes. Great question. We have had some conversations about that. And essentially, yes, you could open these doors. But because of where those meeting pods are located, you are really limiting the amount of additional seating outside of those doors, which it sounds like in those very large events, you end up providing a large amount of seating out there. So that would really limit that. That's one of the restrictions and one of the limitations of having a shared facility. And then one of the other logistical issues that we've kind of talked about a bit is entry of the public coming in for council events. So typically people would be coming through these doors. They potentially could come through these doors. And then all of a sudden, we have this door that we're trying to deal with and unlocking it for council events. They're coming through here. So yeah, the doors and the modifications to the doors is going to be pretty extensive to be able to accommodate the shared, those shared uses, which are pretty complicated. So that type of large event, it will be very difficult to be able to provide the level of seating that you had before when it, when the space is not being used as a shared space for both municipal court as well as for council.
Councilmember Gilman.
Bill, you may be heading toward it in your presentation, but council meetings are a small minority of the current uses of the space. So I don't understand the focus on the council setup because we have a lot of larger gatherings. And I'm thinking, first off, with hearing examiner hearings, which often have both this chamber and the lobby outside with folding chairs filled up. So I just, I just hope that we're going to, we're going to get there that I appreciate that, you know, we're special people and all that, I guess, being the council. But I don't think it's central to focus on how we set up for a council meeting. We're more flexible than several other events that happen on an ongoing basis, so.
Yeah. I think those other meetings, obviously, the, the security wall really would limit some of the flexibility in configuring a table like this into that. It would have to be on one side or the other, essentially that wall, if it's in, it's provided. But as far as being able to have additional seating in this area, I think would be, we should be able to accommodate it for those different type of proceedings that would occur. Essentially, we just move those tables out of the way, be able to put additional seating inside the litigation area, you know, in front of the security wall and be able to use it fairly similar to the way that you currently operate it. The biggest modification is really in the lobby and the overflow in the lobby and how you are currently using the lobby.
City Manager Bernie.
Thank you. And I know Fran's also later in the presentation going to talk a bit about the use of these spaces outside of council and court. So we're going to talk about that. But since we're on this topic right now, just one of the things that Councilmember Gilman made me think about as we're talking about this is when we designed this space as a chambers initially, there's a reason that there's not fixed seating in here. Because the conversation we had was, outside of it being a council chambers, it's a multipurpose use space for lots of things. Some of those which Fran will talk about. You mentioned hearing examiner. I think all of you have been here at night. We have, we have planning commissions sometimes meeting here, other advisory committees at times meeting here. We have open houses and public meeting spaces that our employees use in, sometimes during the day, sometimes with our partner organizations, sometimes at night. And so the barrier wall, I just want to point out, it is going to be a little inefficient in terms of some of those other uses because the vision for this was a wide-open space that could be utilized for lots of different things. And that barrier wall does change that dynamic a bit. So I just wanted to highlight that in this piece of the conversation.
This slide is really, which we pretty much already talked about. The yellow is a little bit kind of fading out. But the conversation about, well, how do you actually go when this is being used as municipal court? How do you get out to use the restrooms and the public restrooms? So again, we are anticipating that any entry into this space for municipal court would come in through the double doors at the far end of the building near the police lobby. From there, everyone would go through security and get screened and then come in either through these double doors or the doors, this other door at the back of the back of the council area or the chambers area or out into the lobby area. So they would be in that space and then leave through the double doors off of the lobby. But once they're in that space, if they do need to have access and use the restrooms, they would have to go out through this double door and then be able to access the male or female restrooms. And then, as we indicated, would have to exit the city hall building, come back around and then go back through security. So we can guarantee that everybody's getting screened no matter what. So there is definitely a flow, an inconvenience associated with the flow and just to be able to provide that level of security in place.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
What happens on days when the court is going on and the lobby is closed?
Yeah. We've had some conversations about logistics of that because typically you have a security officer that's stationed here within the lobby. Most likely, we'd have that security officer locate within the other secured lobby. So maybe there'd be a secondary or a second staff member that would have to be located so both lobbies actually have some level of security in place. So there wouldn't be necessarily a construction solution, but it would be more done with an operations and staffing solution.
Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Yeah. Bill, I think there's, as it's currently drawn, there's four pods. Could you talk about the reasoning behind that? I mean, is it, because it seems like it also is so that there's a barrier, but why four pods?
Actually, during our early programming and planning for the facility, when it was going to be at the Lee space, the need and the desire was actually to have many more meeting spaces. So actually four doesn't fully meet the full program and the desires of all the departments. That's just the most that we could be able to put in within the space to be able to meet that need. So in reality, as I'd have to go back to look at the program, it was more like six to seven was really the goal to be able to have if it was within the Lee space.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
The, it looks like the door is removed from where the kitchenette is back there. Is that, is that true? Behind council, behind council chambers where the kitchenette is, there's a door back there for security for that, for an exit in case of an emergency?
Yeah, we did not, again, we're trying to simplify some of these graphics. So we're not showing every single door that's in those back hallways and those back areas. So those were, would still be in place.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by City Manager Bernie.
So I, I'm, I'm thinking about, initially you talked about the size of the audience that might be accommodated, 50-plus at the low end of that range. I believe, I mean, you're the architect, I'm just a carpenter, but I'm looking at the drawing there and you've got 16 wide by five rows in the same space as we have these chairs where we have 10 chairs by three rows. So we have 30 spaces in the way that we usually organize them in the space that you're hoping to have 60 folks. Are we going to use kindergarten-sized chairs or, how would you do this 16 wide and five rows in that same space that the people are sitting in there?
Yeah, we just use kind of standard template chair sizes and incorporated them into it. So it will be tight.
It would be really tight.
Yes.
Well, I'm just thinking, because I'm realizing that, that partition wall, in order to create enough space for defense and everybody, is at about the same place that you're sitting.
Yeah.
So we're talking about essentially dividing the space in half and that seating that's there right now is what would be the audience for both court and functionally for council meetings or hearing examiner hearings. So, okay, I'm just, I was just double checking. That seemed like a Lilliputian sort of model there.
I understand.
Thank you, yeah.
City Manager Bernie.
Thank you. I just, Councilmember Vanderpoel asked, raised a point that I think Fran's going to talk about later and that's our hours of operation. We are closed on Fridays and we're open 9:00 to 3:30 Monday through Thursday. And so there are some operational changes we would have to make in this situation. But I just wanted to highlight that Fran's going to cover that later.
So these next couple of slides are really looking at security. So we just wanted to be able to show a couple of renderings of what that security area would be. So this is close to the double doors coming in at the end of the building near the police department's lobby. So again, you come through those doors, there'd be a security station. Again, whether that, this is showing with magnetometer and a desk for a security officer. You don't need to have a magnetometer, magnetometer. It can be done hand, hand screening or different ways, but we just wanted to be able to show. It's wide enough to be able to accommodate the full technology for security screening. the full technology for security screening, if need be. And then, once you get beyond, we're looking back, that, again, the flow of the people, and anyone coming to court would be then moving down the hallway, again, towards these double doors. And then, seeing the double doors here located on the left, we'd be able to, you know, post court docket and any information about what's going on in court that day, and the public would be able to now start seeing that public service help desk for probation and clerk's office. And then, as you continue on, again, you'd arrive at that service desk, whether that's done with furniture or built-in. We're showing it as being built-in, but it can easily be done with furniture, one way or another. Again, this area gets to be a little bit tight, but we're able to still accommodate ADA and, and egress flow around the end of it, with still providing that desk in place. We talked a little bit already about this view, with the public, additional public seating for people waiting for their court docket to be called within the waiting area, or as public are getting, receiving services here at the probation and clerk's desk. We wanted to provide a little information just about those meeting pods, so this just happens to be one of several different industry-provided acoustical pods that are in place. Again, they typically can be designed to accommodate up to four people. They can be incorporated with power outlets for charging. They have ceiling fans, so they're able to use outside air for cooling and heating within them. They're soundproofed to be able to provide that, that privacy within the space. They can be designed to be open, glass front, glass back, opaque back, so there's a lot of modifications that we can end up providing it within it.
Bill, we have a question.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
I can't imagine that those pods, or similar pods, would be ADA accessible. What would be the meeting option for someone who could not get into one of the pods?
So, they actually do, and they can actually be ADA accessible, so they would not have built-in banquettes or desks within them. Essentially, they would, we'd just have loose, you know, chairs and a round or a square two-person meeting room, meeting space within it. So the size of the pods that we're looking at, and we scaled, was based off of them being ADA accessible for that. So, yeah, the, most of the examples that they end up showing have these, you know, banquettes or seating within them. They have a lot more flexibility in really how that seating is actually laid out. And then, the, finally, the aspect is really technology. So, there's a fair amount of technology within the space that can be reutilized. You know, obviously, we have speakers, we have microphones, we have some cameras that are currently in place, but we do know that there needs to be some technology that would have to be modified to be able to make sure that this is able to be used for municipal court versus for council functions. You know, one of the modifications, whoops, is actually gonna be up at the dais, just to be able to provide the technology and the equipment for the judge and the clerk to be able to function and operate. So, there might be some modifications that need to be made up there. It could be just done with equipment that needs to get broken down and moved prior to another meeting occurring in here. There, currently, the court uses their laptop computers for digital recording of the record. Typically, that's done within an IT closet or an IT rack where the digital record is stored. We were anticipating that's what would, would occur, but that could easily be accommodated in that, that meeting room, or the roving room, and essentially being able to have an IT closet or an IT rack there, where all that technology could head in and back to. So, but there would be some modifications that need, would need to be done. So, as far as technology goes, there, there will be some infrastructure and some modifications that need to be done, but there's also some potential for reu, reutilizing some of the technology that's currently already in place.
Bill, and is, is the reason for the current technology that we have, is that, is that because it's public-facing, the use of that, it's for public-facing purposes, or can you help me understand, like, why does there need to be a separate?
Separate system?
Yeah.
So, typically, again, it's for being able to digitally record all of the court proceedings. And so, a lot of times, the technology that's currently in place with your cameras and your microphone systems, that are going for broadcasting and recording it for city use, might not interface with the recording and system that the courts use. And so, in my experience, sometimes, they end up having duplicate systems, totally separate systems, because they're being used for different purposes. But if it's designed from the very beginning, sometimes you can actually integrate them. But some of the past projects that have been more as a retrofit, that integration wasn't possible, so it was simpler and more cost-effective to actually have two totally separate systems with regards to camera and microphone system. But we haven't engineered the system yet. We just wanted to be able to point out, there might need to be some duplicate systems in place, if it cannot be fully integrated. Okay. That's our, my presentation, so any other questions with regard to this? Otherwise, we'll turn it back over to Fran.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Logistics. We've already kind of dabbled into, or had a few questions in this area, and this is where kind of the rubber hits the road, and there are still questions that need to be answered. But defining the space is part of the puzzle, and the next piece is logistics. Calendars, operating hours, meeting rooms, occupancy, and then the setting up and tearing down, as, and as we were just hearing, you know, it's not simply moving a table and flipping a sign. There's the technology, there's the doors, there's the access, the security measures, all of those things, and ensuring, whether it's for council, or the hearings examiner, or planning commissioner, whatever meeting it is, that everything is in place, so that, that whatever use is happening there, or business is happening there, that they're able to do that efficiently and effectively. So the current court calendar is shown here, excuse me, and it is based on, based on conversations with Miriam Olson. They are able to adjust the days and times. This obviously reflects the fact that, that the court is at the Justice Center, and that's what, that's all that happens there. So, the, the calendar is reflecting that. So, obviously, it would be critical to achieve the shared use by being able to be flexible with the court calendar and council and other things that need, that may need to happen here. So you note that currently court begins, if you can see some of the, if I can find it here. Well, Tuesday, you'll note that court begins at eight AM, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and the court, excuse me, the city hall lobby opens at nine and is closed on Friday. So given that the lobby and the court have separate entrances for the different uses, the opening and closing time shouldn't be an issue, but then it's the logistics behind that. What about security? What about door access? What about signage? What's gonna be happening at, at those times? And, and it will cause confusion. Communicating the schedule and clearly identifying the access points will be important. Otherwise, we're, you know, we're also, in addition to security, gonna need to make sure that we have somebody that's gonna be able to help direct people. So adjustments will need to be made relative to the meeting room preparation. For example, currently, staff have access to the council chambers at two o'clock on Tuesday, in order to make sure that everything is ready to go, so that the, when the council meeting's ready to go, it goes off without a hitch. Given the additional logistics, more time will be needed to ensure the systems, tables, chairs, signage, doors, access are in place. And so, at a minimum, it will affect the court calendar on those days, but also may impact it for other evening public meetings as well. For the city hall meeting rooms, we delved into the calendar over the course of the last year for the council chambers here. Council, excuse me, conference room 207, which is at the top of the stairs, and 112, which is immediately adjacent here. Council chambers, fifty-three percent occupancy. 207, fifty percent occupancy, and a lot of those are related with the community planning and development meetings that have schedules behind them that must be met. And then, 112, at thirty-three percent, and I would argue that that room probably has more occupancy as for drop-ins types of things.
Fran, there's a question, yes. Councilmember Green.
Fran, can you remind, 207, for the court need, what was envisioned to, that that space would be?
Well, it's more a displaced meeting space, as opposed to court. Yeah, because we wanna keep all of the court on first floor, as opposed to having to, you know, have somebody with, somebody going to the second floor and everything that goes with that. So, it's more the displaced meeting spaces. So, in addition, let's see, so in addition to the council chambers, court will, will need access to 112 and the, the smaller meeting space out here. And so, as a result, those small meeting spaces won't be accessible, but throughout the floors two, three, and four, for staff, there are other small meeting rooms. And so, it should be fairly easy for people to find a, a smaller room to pop into. But for larger group events, adjustments will be necessary and will be harder to schedule. The current, well, I, I'm sorry, I've reviewed the, the percentages. 207, conference room 207 at the top of the stairs, is the next largest meeting space available for staff. Its occupancy is thirty-two people, and, and as we see, the current occupancy is fifty percent. Council chambers, with a current capacity of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven, is occupied fifty-three percent. And when city hall was designed, as Jay mentioned, the council chambers were intended to be available during the day to accommodate large staff trainings, meetings, and those types of things. And the furniture and things were intended to be mobile, so that the space could accommodate all of those different uses. And since 207 is limited to thirty-two people, large group meetings are gonna have to be scheduled off-site. That, if, if that happens, if there's not a way to accommodate here on-site somehow, if this, if this does occur, there may be rental fees for large spaces at other locations, and at a minimum, additional travel time. You have to take your staff and meet, if you're normally housed here at city hall, going from here to that other larger space, parking, or walking, or however you're getting to and from, that's additional downtime. So there will be an effect on productivity potentially as well. And going back to the council chambers, 207 and 112, the types of uses occurring there are training, labor negotiations, hearings examiners, staff meetings, advisory bodies, regional meetings, interviews, and other events, like the police swearing-in ceremonies, or the public works project meetings, those types of things. So, taking all of these, the, the information you saw about the space, the, the information on logistics and, and those types of things, and distilling that down into considerations for pros and cons, the, the first con listed, excuse me, pro listed under considerations, highly efficient use of space by sharing the council chambers and municipal court in a, in a single space. And while sharing space is, can be considered to be efficient and effective, and being a pro in this case, because it's occupied a hundred percent of the time, we're also, in this case, losing the largest meeting space during the day, and that is a significant, that is significant, excuse me, and mitigating that loss will be challenging. Because as we saw in the last, the last slide, the meeting spaces occupancy rates currently are anywhere from thirty-three to fifty-three percent. And, and we had some flexibility, but the flexibility may be lost, and the result may or may not be sustainable. As we, as we're looking at this as our forever home, so to speak, looking at how court evolves and the space needs, that, that they will need to do business, and for city hall, and what happens out of here, and, and what we'll need for our city staff to conduct business. Additionally, a pro, of course, is lower construction costs, versus having to go out and construct a new, a new facility, as we saw in the feasibility study completed in 2022. And as Debbie mentioned, it has a hefty price tag for a brand-new facility. And then, also, a pro of this would be able to maintain the municipal court and related programs and services.
Fran, could you remind me of what are those costs to do all of these retrofits for the chambers?
For this chamber?
Yes.
We, right now, the, the preliminary estimate that we have right now is about 1.5 million dollars. That sounds like a lot of money. But when we start looking at door hardware, and pods, and furniture, and technology, permits, all of these other things, staff time, consultant's time, it adds up quickly. It is a planning-level estimate, so it does have a contingency with it. It doesn't mean necessarily that we would expend all of that money. If we can do, as Bill mentioned, maybe we do a less permanent fixture, as opposed to a, a nice desk-type of thing. But, at, at this point, going into the project, there's just a lot about this, because this space was not designed with this type of use in mind, to, and, and the security measures, and the things like that that go with. So, equipment costs are, they're, they will add up. And so, that's our, that is a preliminary estimate, and I, you know, certainly, we could spend less, but would I go back into the project budget and say, oh, we can cut that in half? No, absolutely not at this point, because there's so much that we, that we don't know. We, we have an idea of what we'll need, but digging into it. This is a newer building, sometimes it's more expensive in an older building, but still, there's a lot of doors, windows, hardware, equipment, furniture that, that goes into this. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Welcome. On the, continuing with considerations, on the con side, a duplication of the court staff spaces at 108 State, and here at city hall, as mentioned, with the, the judge, and, and also with that is just having to, the logistics of having your, your tools, equipment, everything that you might need to do work, and kind of transporting it back and forth for spaces. Limited access to highly-used meeting spaces, D Hall, we're kind of hitting on that one a lot, but that, that is a consideration here. Regular equipment, IT, furniture setup for the conversion, and I don't, I, I do want to hit this again, I don't want to underestimate the effort that it's gonna take. that it's going to take. You have a meeting that goes late into the night, somebody is going to need to make sure that everything is turned over for that use for court the next morning so that when the court staff walks in, they're ready to do business. And so, there's a lot that will go on with that. And we're talking about doors and, you know, if we're removing hardware, opening doors, shutting doors, ensuring that things are locked, because when we go into court mode, that security is critical. The prosecuting attorney and public defender in the same building, we talked about that earlier, that that is, it's not a best practice. And whereas we can create some space, there is the potential of them being in the same building. We've listed here that jury trials would occur in alternate location. I think that is, that one is still kind of up in the air, but the consideration here is figuring out just how jury trials would happen. The logistics here with coming into the door that's immediately behind what might be considered the jury box, that's not an ideal situation either, so, which may need other requirements or other improvements to make happen. So, in custody, transport, and holding, there's one holding cell in OPD, and it's really not ideal. It was, again, it wasn't created with intent in mind to hold people for jury purpose, or excuse me, for trial purposes. And then it's logistics of getting them from that cell here. Public access to the restrooms is limited. That's, as we saw, it's a long and windy route to get there, and then it could be windy to get back in, having to exit the building and come back in. And then the impact to customer service areas for staff and public, not only will the public service staff over here have a more confined space that they're working in, so when people come in and queue up, it's maybe a little bit more uncomfortable, more people coming in with maybe other questions that they hadn't been addressing before. So we can, of course, address that with training and things like that. But also, along that line, is the clientele coming in. I've heard that they're, over at the Justice Center, sometimes they have a client come into the area that is, they're misbehaving in some fashion, they're loud or disruptive. And we, the counterstaff here may be addressing those types of things as well. And so, it's another element of change in our, in the lobby area. Going back to the limited seating for council meetings, having the separation wall then limits. And so, between this wall here and then the pods for those secure, private conversations, it does shrink the space up that's available for seating for the meetings. And finally, limited space to accommodate future growth for court here at City Hall.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Fran, not being familiar with the day-to-day tasks of some of the court staff, can you ballpark sort of a percentage that would have daily reason to need to either travel back and forth? Or, like, I'm having trouble getting over that seven blocks apart that if you're a person who doesn't or doesn't want to drive or what, like, that just seems very frustrating if positions have to go back and forth multiple times throughout a typical day.
Yeah. I don't feel qualified to answer that question.
Judge, please approach if you could answer that question for us. Thank you.
Of course. One of the things that I will be, do you mind if I sit? I just feel like I'm bending over to get to the microphone. Thank you. One of the things that we'll be discussing later, hopefully, is that we're very much willing to collaborate on a calendar with you guys and only have courts in the morning. So who would be coming here would be one person to staff that front desk to really make sure that folks know where they're going, to direct them, because there will be confusion. Anytime there is a relocation, there is confusion. Even if we go to District Court, they'll still be confused. Because guess what? We've been a 900 Plum Street for a million years in most people's eyes. So with that, there will be one person there providing that guidance, and then it would be myself and one clerk that would be coming over. Likelihood, if there's a nice guy, we'll be walking here together. If there is not, then we will be driving together. But the likelihood is there will be two to three people coming over every morning, leaving around noon. And that's it. Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Gilman.
I think I've got a little bit of a wind-up to the question. So first, I'm frustrated that I thought we were talking about how court might use the council chambers. And instead, we're talking about how we might build a courtroom and have it still function to hold council meetings. And so, I hadn't expected the pods, the separation wall, the security to make such a change in how the space might be used. A particular thing I noticed is the huddle-room pods, as they reach this wall right at the end of the glass here, they create a very narrow hallway, about four foot wide, between the customer service counter and these partitions. And that is the place where the three floors of staff come down to greet visitors and bring them up. And it's also where we have a half dozen folks in the lobby to do customer service, and it'll be the path to the restroom for folks in the court, all simultaneously passing through a bottleneck like that. So, I'm just, I'm challenged by adding the security elements and having the courtroom spill out to also use half of the lobby. I hadn't anticipated that. So my question is, in looking at other cities, because we had several other cities that were suggested at the last work session, you've had some conversations, are there cities where the court comes and uses the council chambers? Or are they generally converted to this sort of security and private space for attorneys to confer with folks? And I just, I hadn't anticipated so much changes to make this a courtroom that could have some additional uses. So I'm just trying to get my head around that.
Yeah, I'll give a quick answer and then I'll turn it over to Bill. But my, it's kind of like what Fran said. The buildings are different. The workflow is different. And the number of entrances we have are different. So yes, they did share a chamber, a council chamber and a court, but the physical layout and the space and how it flowed were different. Do you want to add to that?
Yes, the, you know, an example is Taquilla, which you actually heard from the judge and the court administrator there. Again, how that happened to be designed and laid out was still, it was a single entry point from the public coming into the front lobby area. They were able to turn one way to be able to go to the City Hall service desks, or go another way and go through security and then directly actually into the chambers or municipal court. So it was one entry point. And as you look around here, just in the back, there's over four entry points. So how do we secure that is really the challenge versus, I think, some of these other cities and facilities because of how they were laid out and how they were designed, made it a little bit more straightforward, a little bit easier, to be able to make that conversion. Once we're able to get into the space, then it's, as you've kind of heard, it's pretty simple as far as the technology goes and possibly being able to share it. It's really the security and access and how do we screen people before they come into the space? And because there's so many entries into this, that's the real challenge.
If I may just briefly follow up, and this level of having a proper courtroom, I guess, like, I was hearing from Auburn about a storefront for their community court or in a strip mall. Is there a continuum of court? You had mentioned that you were going to talk about what's best practices, what's law. This level of security and private meeting spaces, I'm assuming is just a convention, but is it a convention across misdemeanor municipal courts? Or is there some difference between misdemeanor courts and other levels of court for these protocols?
The safety and security and screening is required no matter what level of court is actually occurring. They, to be able to provide safety for all participants to be able to go in, there needs to be a screening of weapons for anyone coming into the courtroom. The other requirements, as I've tried to kind of point out, they are best practices, but we couldn't divert away from them. So, yeah, there's, yeah, there are limited things that are actually required by law. It is, you know, being able to provide a level of safety and security for all the participants and being able to provide a space where litigation and court docket can actually be performed. How it's done and how it's laid out is a lot of flexibility. You know, you mentioned municipal court. There's a lot more flexibility with municipal or with community court because of the way that those services are actually provided. And currently, they've done a great job with limited resources and spaces to be able to provide that. So I think, again, community court will be able to be successful wherever it's located. Municipal court, though, is a little bit more challenging because of the level of security that's needed to be provided.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about, because you mentioned secure parking, but I haven't heard accommodation. So parking for staff and jurors, and I still don't hear where the jurors will gather, like, a room to be used for this, in this design at all?
Yeah, we have not been able to work through a lot of that. Parking is definitely a challenge. There's been some conversations, but as a global solution for secured parking, as well as the actual additional demand and parking needed for municipal court functions occurring here, we have not necessarily worked out a solution. I think the city has had some conversations and some thoughts, but a concrete plan, I don't think is necessarily in place.
So acquiring parking somewhere near City Hall is not part of the price we saw? Or is part of the price we saw?
The additional parking and acquisition of property for that is not part of the 1.5 for this, correct? But it's a part of the bigger project. Parking is a whole nother element to this project that is being worked on to accommodate the required parking that we're displacing from the Justice Center currently. And in addition to that, the parking required per the police guild contract and those types of things. So we're actively working on that and pursuing additional property and parking areas to address those needs. But is it, are we, have we drilled down on it yet? No. And part of that is the logistics in where that parking is located. How do you manage it? And what are the costs associated with that? So, again, details to be drilled down.
This is where you remind us it's only a 10% design, right?
Yeah.
City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, I just want to highlight, as we look at parking, so the other complicating factor is there's parking requirements for City Hall when we constructed it, and we accomplished those parking requirements through the use of spaces at the Justice Center. So by no longer having the Justice Center, at some point in time, we sell it, we still have to, by code, accommodate the parking requirements that are required for this building. So part of Fran's work is not just to figure out how she accommodates parking for courts if courts is here, it's also we have to figure out how we accommodate parking for the loss of spaces at the Justice Center. So when Fran says parking is a little complicated, we haven't quite worked it out, I just wanted to add that wrinkle in because that's what we're having to work through.
And that cost is not included in the $1.5 million that you mentioned earlier? Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Why, because I just want to get back to maybe just a little more follow-up on Councilmember Gilman's question about the shared space. And Debbie or Fran, some of the sites you looked at that share space with court but don't share space with customer service, so could you just talk about that? Like, what you learned, like, not all spaces are equal, right?
Yeah, so one of the places, I believe it was Taquilla, they're in a separate building or a separate area, so they don't have common area for the general public and the people going to court. And I think that is unique for us here in this situation. And Jay and I were also talking about the Lee Creighton Justice Center, even when we had, at the City Hall, the center ring of that is all court and everybody went through there. And you could, the general public could go to the outer rings to do their business with the city. So that's different.
Any additional questions? For me, I'm still struggling with, you know, access. So, do you know if any of the comparable cities who have done this, what have their community members said about the space and how they navigate it? Our constituents, our community members are used to a certain level of access to the council chambers. It's fairly easy. You walk through those doors and you walk in here. And that will be very different. So I'm a little bit concerned about, this space was designed with in mind that community members have access to their elected officials, to what is happening here publicly. So can you speak to what you heard or if you heard anything at all from other communities?
I would say in the conversations with Taquilla and then the information that Edmonds provided, that wasn't really a part of that conversation. But what I'll go back to is in each of those situations with Taquilla having a common door, but then being able to go right or left into these two very distinct uses. And then in Edmonds, in the virtual tour that we had there on paper, again, it was space that they were able to manage for staff. And there were some, a few, couple extra doors that they had to close off and such, but, so from an access sort of thing. But as far as a situation like this, where you come into the lobby and it is wide and open and accommodating and you can see into the council chambers and you can access, I would say that those two, and those are the only two that I personally looked at, was not the same type of setting. And so, that point about, now I walk into this space and, oh my gosh, it just, this doesn't feel like, I'm not comfortable coming in here to do what, you know, to do the business that I had planned to come in and do. That wasn't a part of, for me, those conversations.
Okay. It's just something that I'm thinking about. Again, because from time to time, we have contentious issues that draws a crowd and people want their voices to be heard. And I'm concerned about access and the stress of everyone involved of navigating the space for council members, staff, community members, the logistics, the time we adjourn at the end of the night, and then the person who has to stay and change the equipment. I am not loving this idea. I'm just going to be honest and just state that for the record. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Vanderpool.
I have to say that another concern I have is the future growth. I'm just, this is more like a comment about where my, part of my concern about, to in addition to your concerns, is where, you know, thinking about the future growth of the space, I mean, you touched on it a little, but I'm very curious. You've looked at some other cities that may have grown a little bit more than ours, but so thinking about growth, thinking about how, what is the predict, can you, do you have any idea of predicting if the space hits a maximum in the future if we go forward with this plan?
I would be reluctant to do that because right now, as we look back 10 years as to how we were doing business as a city or how court was doing business, it's different than where we are now. And then looking ahead, it's difficult to predict that as well. But what this does and may- But, but what this does, and maybe this is at the core of this, is that these changes, it does. It fundamentally changes the customer service, open government model the first floor was designed for and possesses significant logistical challenges, as we're experiencing or hearing about, that will be difficult to sustain over the long term. So.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Assistant City Manager Sullivan.
Thank you. What we did learn from the city of Tuck Willa, they did successfully share their space with chambers. And we also learned that they couldn't sustain it. And they went out for a bond measure to build a new building. So they no longer are in that shared space. So I wanted to share that.
Councilmember Gilman.
Mayor Payne, if I can ask just a moment of privilege. This is, I pictured this differently, looking at the slides from when we're sitting in the room and pacing it up. So I'm feeling some frustration and I'm wondering if anybody at the table has any ibuprofen in their bag? Because my head's exploding right now.
Yes, it's, it sounds like this is a great segue for a recess, which I intended to do.
Perfect. And Dawn has me covered, so thank you.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and take a 10-minute recess before we move on to our next presentation? Okay, so we are back. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Sullivan to introduce our next presenter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to welcome Frankie Peters, the County Court Executive, and Judge Sam Meyer from Thurston County, to help us learn more about their programs and services. But before I turn it over, I want to personally thank Frankie, who I've been working with directly. He has been open and collaborative, not only with me, but with other staff who have reached out to him about questions regarding their programs and what this transition might look like. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over.
I'll start. Good evening, everybody. Members of the council, Mayor Payne, thank you all for having us here this evening. And before I get started, I just do want to recap how it is that we got here. My understanding of it is how we got here. My understanding, some months ago, the city reached out to the county government to discuss the concept of contracting for court services. County government reached out to Thurston County District Court and said, can this happen? And can you make it happen? And Frankie put together a list of FTE. We couldn't do it under current capacity, of course. Frankie put together a list of FTEs that were necessary, sent it back off to the county, and then negotiations between the city and county ensued. And Frankie and I have been involved with Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Bernie in an advisory role over the course of those negotiations. And so, to start with this slide here, I just want to comment on the, underneath Thurston County District Court, it indicates serving justice through serving people. That's the ongoing vision statement for Thurston County District Court, which we take very seriously. And I want to emphasize people because, as you may have heard, limited jurisdiction courts in Washington are frequently referred to as the people's court. The reason for that is the municipal and district courts, they see more people, more citizens in Washington, all other court levels combined, I think times two. And so more people form their opinion of the justice system in Washington State and courts of limited jurisdiction than in any other courts. Or I've been of that opinion for quite some time. There are, there are two types of limited jurisdiction courts in Washington. There's municipal courts, is what you have here in the city of Olympia, as well as district courts in all counties. There are some differences between the two of them, but, and start with what's common to all of them. In the criminal cases that they hear, they hear misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. Misdemeanors, of course, are offenses that are punishable by up to 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine. Gross misdemeanors are punishable by up to 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine. Also, all courts of limited jurisdiction hear traffic and non-traffic infractions, parking violations, and impound hearings as well. But the district courts in Washington are a little bit different from municipal courts, and they hear some additional things, including, you see, civil protection orders, name changes, small claims, and civil suits. And the concept of people's court, I think, really plays out in the civil matters. When you hear anti-arrestment petitions, typically those are people, some one, sometimes two, or people are in crisis, sometimes one, always two, people are angry, and always emotional as well. Also, the great majority of these people are not represented. They're there by themselves and they're, come to court. And it's a challenge for the judicial officer to meet these people where they are, try and figure out where they're coming from, and then make the best decision that benefits the both of them. And so, and also with regard to the civil cases, I'd also point out that since Olympia Municipal doesn't provide, or no municipal court provides civil services, we do serve citizens of Olympia in some contexts. You know, as I said about the anti-arrestment petitions, there's, as recently as Monday, I was hearing petitions that involved people who lived within the city limits of Olympia. Same is true with name changes. Name, we, if people want their name changed, the jurisdiction lies in district court. Anybody who wants their name changed in the county comes here. And that, I think they can even come from out of the county now. They don't even need to live to the county anymore. And small claims is another, I think, the great personification of the concept of the people's court. Attorneys aren't allowed there. And small claims are civil cases between two individuals involving $10,000 or less, if it's just individuals, corporations or businesses or non-humans, I guess would be the best way to put it. They're limited at 5,000, or maybe the way I put it, I don't know if that's the best way, but they're listed limited at 5,000 or less. And it's the same situation where these people come to court or highly emotional situations. Sometimes they've been friends, maybe not. And they've turned to the court to solve the problems for them. And given that they're not lawyers, a lot of times they'll come to court with a grocery bag full of facts, dump it on the bench, and it's left to the judicial officer to figure out if there is a claim, if that claim has any merit, and if that claim can be compensated in a judgment in any sort. And so that's always a challenging situation as well. Civil suits, just general civil lawsuits, which do involve lawyers, we hear those. And the jurisdictional limit on that is $100,000 or less. We see things like a collection agent, a lot of collection agency stuff. We see low-impact personal injury cases, you know, and that don't involve, you know, the high amounts that you read about in the newspaper sometimes. The advantage of pursuing civil suits in district court is the streamlined discovery rules. Discovery rules in superior court are much more onerous. And the district court discovery rules are much more streamlined and people can get to verdict or get to disposition or resolution much quicker in district courts than they can in superior court. Just the following is a, just kind of a breakdown of the types of the cases that are filed in district court. And you can see the state and county cases, which are from unincorporated Thurston County, make up the great majority of the misdemeanor cases that we hear. I think you also know that we do handle municipal court services for Lacy and Tumwater and Rainier. And they make up 38% of the misdemeanor caseload. You know, and I know there's been discussion about district courts contracting with municipalities. That's not an entirely uncommon phenomenon in Washington. Snohomish County contracts with 13 separate municipalities. I think King County does quite a lot as well. Grant County has contracts with eight municipalities. And Okanagan has at least six municipalities, and then there's others with three or four. And if this goes through and if Olympia comes on board, there'll be the fourth municipality here for Thurston County District Court. And then the breakdown in the case filings, which is the final three bullet points there, there's infractions, 62%, and misdemeanors. And then the civil, the general category of civil, that I went through all of those individually a moment ago, those make up 20% of what we hear. What I think is interesting about that number, which kind of surprised me when I saw it, is because the great majority of court time in district court, in our district court, is taken up by the misdemeanors, which is the least number of the filings. And what that tells you is, or what tells me, is all the work that goes on behind the work that goes on behind the scenes, you know, when you're in court and, you know, and you hear the people argue motions in civil cases and go to disposition and all that. Much more work is done behind the scenes in the administrative office, and the civil administrator's office, and the criminal administration as well. And so, the district court departments, I'm gonna turn that over to, I guess if you can use the analogy of, if you look at a district court as an automobile, you know, I know how to turn it on, I know how to drive, but I couldn't tell you too much about the engine. And the engine of Thurston County District Court is in that list up there, and the person who can talk a lot about the engine of district court is seated to my left, Frankie Peters, is the court executive officer, court administrator, as well as, I guess, chief mechanic now for the engine that runs district court. So Frankie, go ahead. I'll let you cover this slide.
Wonderful. Thanks so much, Judge. I just wanted to take a couple minutes to go through what the services are as far as the departments first, and then we can talk about the programs a little bit. We have six departments within our district court. We have our court services department and judicial support, so that's gonna be your forward-facing customer service, as well as the court clerks that are going into the courtroom. These two departments primarily support our criminal and infraction caseloads. We have our civil and small claims department, again, performing the same as court and judicial support, but within the civil and small claims realm. We have our accounting department. We also have our probation department. Our probation department's current focus right now is on monitored supervision. And we also have what is up there, our mental health and intensive supervision division within probation. This is a newer part of our probation department. We ended up expanding these services back in 2019. This was in recognition of the needed support beyond that of just the therapeutic courts. So therapeutic courts are absolutely fabulous. They provide a great resource to our community members, but there is recognition at the time that you could choose, as a defendant, not to go into a therapeutic court. So the discussion at the time was, how do we continue to extend these resources to our community members that are justice-involved at a different stage of the case lifecycle? And the result of that was our mental health and intensive supervision division within probation. It's a similar model of our mental health and veterans' court from the care coordinator probation counselor position. What they end up doing is they have a smaller caseload, it's an intensive supervision, they'll provide direct resources, have a lot more frequent contact. They specialize in mental health and substance use disorders. So it's been a very valuable division within that. We just recently got more support for that as well. And we've also incorporated, from that substance use side, deferred prosecutions for driving while under the influence within that division as well. And then, of course, I think everybody knows, we have our mental health and veterans' court. We are very happy here. Just a couple weeks ago, we had our 20th anniversary for mental health court, 16th anniversary for veterans' court. So it was a wonderful opportunity to bring all of our community members and partners together to celebrate that. As far as our mental health and veterans' court, I believe we were the sixth in the state for mental health court, first in the state for veterans' court. We're a mentor program, and we've helped other courts across the state also institute their own and make changes to their therapeutic court models, too, to help stand those programs up as well. So it's something that we're very passionate about. And then as far as programs, you take that first one.
First, I wanna talk about the pretrial services department in Thurston County. And I would mention that the Thurston County pretrial services department, that covers Superior Court as well. Just gonna digress for a minute. Thurston County was extremely fortunate to be involved in a program. It was associated with, it was APPR, and that's an, that stands for, an acronym, I should say, for advanced, let's see if I can get it right, advanced poly, policy and pretrial research. And that was a nationwide project that had seven pilot throughout the country, two in the state, and one was Pierce County, Superior Court, only Superior Court, not district court. And we were fortunate enough to be included in that as well. And that's been an ongoing process over the last four years. Over the course of that project, they developed an evidence-based PSA, or public safety assessment, that when, and when people get arrested or come into custody, they get screened, and then they get referred, and then that report goes to whatever court, whether it's Superior or District. And then when we take a look at that, and we take a look at other things, and then if we refer them to pretrial services supervision, and not everyone does get referred there, but their level of supervision varies based on their profile, and they look at a number of things, including history of failure to appear, criminal history, nature of the offense, nature of prior similar offenses, and then that will dictate the level of their supervision. And it's from, and the lowest level of supervision was they simply send text reminders of court dates, up to the highest level of supervision pretrial is they have to have face-to-face contact once per week. And so, that will vary throughout the nature, again, of the defendant. Do you wanna talk about the hub?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So the Thurston County Resource Hub, we have an amazing partnership with them. This is a program that's been expanding over the years, to the extent of, we actually have some of the county staff that come into the courtrooms. I know the Thurston County Resource Hub is more known as that kinda center location for any community member to come in and get resources. But they've also taken that opportunity, knowing that we're there within campus, they're just a couple buildings away from us, that we have a lot of the potential clients and people that they can be serving right there at the courthouse. So we actually have the director and other staff that will come over to our proceedings. It doesn't matter whether you're in a therapeutic court, you're on a pretrial sentencing, they'll come in on the arraignment typically, and actually meet with those that are in the courtroom there to have a conversation, to see how they can provide resources and support for them. So it's been a fabulous opportunity to have their support and keep them involved in this process as well, so that we can continue to provide any resources that we can to everybody coming into the court, no matter what the case status is. We also have a substance monitoring program through Thurston County District Court. This is one that I was very, very happy that we were able to stand up. We had a lot of support from our county commissioners to get this resource available to all those that are indigent coming into the courts. Over 85% of the defendants in the district courts are indigent. And what we recognize is that there's a need to provide further support for those that are coming in that may have some form of substance use disorder or any issues that extend, or that are part of why they're there in the first place. And what you'd have typically is somebody who would come in, perhaps on a DUI. We need to ensure that they're not gonna drink again, so there isn't arrest to the, to the community. You can either impose jail time, or you can do like an alcohol monitoring bracelet. Those things cost money. They cost $100, $150 just to hook up, and they can cost $20 or $30 a day just to keep them on. So you can see that it starts becoming a huge barrier right there for all of our community members that are justice-involved, as far as how do you maintain success while you're going through this process. And what we're able to do through the substance monitoring program is essentially pay for those devices and for urinalysis testing. So if they come in, it's a wonderful jail alternative that we can set them up with this without any financial barriers. And what was very surprising about it is, once implementing this program, within a very short time, we saw that compliance rates with any substance use monitoring greatly went up. So it's quite interesting. Once we started providing those resources and eliminating those barriers, you start seeing compliance go up for everybody within the court. So it was amazing to see that, and we're very happy about that program. And that is through contract, through Friendship Diversion Services. They're, again, right up the road, just a couple buildings up from us. We have a fantastic partnership with them. They've been partnered with the county, actually, for quite some time. I believe they have contracts through our prosecutor's office as well, and we'll frequently see what we call friendship diversions that are coming through in a pretrial status for our court cases. Did you wanna talk about this a little bit?
Sure. And so, what you've, and if this creates a feedback, okay, if you're right. And so, what you've heard so far about the pretrial services and the substance monitoring program, that's typically predisposition. If someone's, again, whether not to set bail and hold them, or put them on an alcohol monitoring device. Both the Friendship Diversion Services, as well as the pretrial services, they also monitor dispositions. It's what's known as a stipulation order of continuance, where cases are continued without a finding, with a number of conditions. If they comply with all those conditions, the charge will either be dismissed or amended to a reduced charge. And that's a form of disposition of cases, which is not a plea, but we, those sorts of dispositions can be handled through both pretrial services, as well as a friendship diversion agreement. And also, and you may have mentioned this, and I apologize if I'm repeating, but the substance monitoring, you know, SCRAM, and not every DUI is alcohol. They also, UAs, they monitor UAs and things of that predisposition, when appropriate, and when we're allowed to do that. There's certain, there's certain times we can and can't do that.
Next one on our list here is the text notifications. I know it's not a program, but it's something that we've been very excited about. It's one of those things that takes a lot of effort on the back end, and it's simple on the front end. Those are the best things. We started out back in, I think it was about 2019 also, when we started text notifications to all of the defendants, notifying them of when their future court dates were. We've also expanded that to a suite, if you will. So what ends up happening, once somebody comes into court, they'll sign up for the text notifications after their first appearance with the court. They'll get a text follow-up that'll basically give them a welcome to the court. It'll provide them the resources, contact information for the court, if any questions end up coming up, how to get ahold of us. Of course, like I said, they'll end up getting their regular court dates updated through text. What we also expanded that to is for conditions that are imposed by the court. So if somebody needs to get a victim impact panel done, or anything like that, it'll send them reminders. Hey, you have an anger management class that's due, it's due on this date, you haven't gotten it in yet, here's where to get that information, or give us a call if you have any questions. We also have another message that goes out once a case is resolved, letting them know that, of course, the case was resolved, and here's where you can get access to all of your documents for the case. And again, if you have any questions, let us know. And the other one is kind of an ad hoc message that we can send out. I call it the inclement weather text. But essentially, what we can do is, if anything comes up, if there's any change in service, we can reach out to everybody. And I don't have a percentage on it, but I would say that a very, very large percentage of all the defendants that come into court end up signing up for these text reminders. We've seen great changes in what our appearance and compliance rates, I think, within the first year of implementing it. We had like a 20% reduction in warrants. So, very happy about those services that we're providing as well.
And then, I was gonna, the procedural justice and fairness initiative. Several years ago, you know, we as judges, you know, everybody thinks they do a great job. And so, but we as judges decided that, you know, we're probably not in the best position to judge ourselves. We may not be objective in that regard. And so, what we did, our court administrator at that time, set up a program with the National Center for Courts, where they sent in people from out of state. We did not know that they were gonna be there. They would just come to court and just hang out and watch, and then, which, and then they would, following all that, they would make an evaluation of how we did. And that was, I think that was, it's going back a ways now, but it was, I think it was 2017 or 18 that that happened, and that was, we published that. That's on the Thurston County District Court website, and you can see that. And there were other courts that we ran that by who didn't wanna do that. But we did that, and we learned from that. And then we've expanded on that and took that and done other things with the administrator's office of the courts, done a lot of data research in terms of, you know, time to, filing to disposition, length of incarceration, you know, in terms of demographics and all that sort of stuff, so we could figure out what we're doing and how we can do a better job. You know, I'm kind of of the opinion that, you know, I've been, I first came on the bench in Thurston County District Court in 2008, but I'm of the opinion that, and I don't know that there's ever such a thing as a finished product when you're in my job. I mean, I learn stuff every day. I see things that I've never seen before every day. And so, I think that the procedural justice and fairness initiative really, really taught me that. And so, that's ongoing. And so, I think that's the substance of our testimony and what we wanted to say. We certainly open to any questions you might have. I guess, I'll take the softballs. You can dress the tough ones to Frankie.
Thank you, Judge. Thanks, Frankie. Any questions from council? Okay. Councilmember Green, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I think this is probably a softball. So it sounds like you've been pretty involved in some of these discussions, as we've looked at the possibility of an ILA. From what you've seen from what the city currently offers in our municipal court, are there any services you feel like aren't replicated in some way, shape, or form with the county services?
Well, not at the moment. I know that there's been some discussion of the community court, and we've done some looking at that. And based on what I've learned and what I know, and the way the community court is, this might be a simplification, and people can correct me, but when people get, come to court and they're screened for community court, and if they're deemed eligible for community court, they'll go in, they'll sign an agreement, much like I described earlier, like a stipulation order of continuance, for varying length of time. There'll be a number of services, they'll be required to, you know, again, you meet people where they are, figure out what they, services they need, get them in position to line up with those services, so they can get the help they need. Then they have to come back for review hearings, where the service providers come to court and meet with, and meet with the individuals, and then hopefully on a pathway to success. And we don't have anything that currently replicates that at the moment, but I think that we certainly can. I, given the way that these cases are resolved, and I'm confident that we can put together a program that might not be, there may be some subtle differences in terms of what happens in community court, but what's available at community court, I'm confident can be available at district court if this were to go through. And what I would really go back to is what we talked to, what Frankie talked about earlier, is that Resource Hub. The Resource Hub, that is just a block or two away from the court. Most, if not all of the services or the providers that come to a community court, probably be available there. And so, that can be, and that's something that is open five days a week. Does that answer your question? Okay, sure.
Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
I have two questions. The first one is about, I, something I really appreciate about the municipal court is, one of the things is their community advisory body. And so, I don't believe that the county has a community advisory body. Is that correct?
We do not. No, we do not.
How do you get input from the community? And is that something that you would be open to exploring?
Well, we, I would have to, I'm not sure exactly how the community advisory, how that works exactly. You know, we just get input from the community, like, just like, just like anyone else. I mean, just in terms of, you know, constituents and voters and conversations like that. We don't have a board that does that. And so, I just, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, you know, I just, yeah, we get, I mean, yeah, I'm not answering your question. In terms of, yeah, we just get input from, you know, people that we work with, other professionals who come to court, in terms of lawyers and, you know, both public defenders, prosecutors, and things of that sort. You know, we're all, you know, we're pretty in tune with the community, all of us. Commissioner Wool used to work here for a number of years. Judge Wilcox lived here for, worked here for a number of years. Brett Buckley used to pro tem here, and he's living in Olympia for years. I've lived my whole life here. And so, and I, again, still don't know if I'm answering your question, but...
Your response is your response. So I appreciate you responding to it. I wonder if it is maybe more in Frankie's bailiwick of how that, because it is, you know, while we're all community members, right, it is a very concerted effort to try to get that community input. And so, I am, while we're thinking about this as a council, one of the things I'm thinking about is, in having conversations with staff, is really... side-by-side comparison, right, of municipal and district court. And so, one of the things that I see, unless I'm told differently, is that there is that advice, community advisory piece. And so, I just am curious if that is something, maybe you, maybe you get it in a different way, and if that's something that you'd be willing to explore.
Well, yet again, I'm, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what that looks like. Because I mean, is that a community advisory board that deals with the court, or just a part of the court, or what exactly?
It's just community court.
It's just community court. Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, so what we...
Go ahead.
The, the advisory board that is discussed at like All Rise and stuff like that, it's a more recent thing that came through All Rise as a thing for the therapeutic courts start looking at as potential best practice as far as bringing in that community involvement. We don't have that level of an advisory board. What we do end up doing is every single year for therapeutic courts, we do a comprehensive evaluation that utilizes our both internal model as well as All Rise models for, I think it's a water model. I, I don't know if that's exactly what it's called, but there's two different models that we use to perform an assessment. What that ends up doing is, it involves each of our stakeholders, each of our justice partners of that multidisciplinary team. It'll be the prosecutor's defense, as well as the court staff, participants that have both graduated or perhaps been terminated from the program. So we bring in all that information, both data and anecdotal, and put that together. And we do regular evaluations with that, as well as hold regular retreats. And that's really how we gather a lot of the information about the program as far as what changes we can make, how we can better meet our participants where they are, and make any transitional changes that we need to. Also, as Judge Meyer was talking about with the procedural justice, one of the work efforts that we ended up doing with AOC through the Washington State Center for Court Research was focused on our mental health and veterans court. So we can actually pull data around the program, the success of those programs, and make active changes to it through another scope to that extent. So that's how we look at our therapeutic model and how we get the input to do it, not necessarily an advisory committee, but a different approach to doing that.
Thanks. I appreciate that. So I have another question, which is about, you know, in an earlier presentation, we're talking a lot about space use. And so, being a resident within Thurston County, I always hear that the courts are going to move to a new building, and, and they're going to be, you know, modernized, are going to have more capacity. And I think many people hear that. And so I just wonder about the capacity for Thurston County Court to take on Olympia. And so if there's any sort of constraints there or challenges?
At this time, it is expected that around April, the sheriffs, because of their purchase of a new building off Israel, they're the only ones besides us that are occupying Building Three. They're going to vacate that area, and we're going to be able to take over that area of Building Three, essentially take over the whole thing and get that square footage. Outside of any new building, any of those conversations, I would have those with the county manager.
Another point I want to make to your question there is, we do a lot of our hearings by Zoom. People always have the Zoom option to come to court, so that alleviates base concerns as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Good. Mayor Payne, I have three questions this evening, so I would, it's your pleasure. I can either ask one and rotate through, or ask my questions.
Just roll, roll on through.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is about who goes to court. You were mentioning, Frankie, that 85% of the cases have indigent defense when they, they come in. And I'm, I'm wondering, my experience of DUI and domestic violence is that it cuts across income levels. So is, is that, is that typical across our state? Is, what is the mechanism that has middle-class people less likely to go to trial or to go to jail for similar offenses?
It's a long conversation.
It's a long, so is it, is that generally true? Is there, is there, are they more likely to get ankle bracelet or get diverted to alcohol awareness class or something?
Well, I, in terms of disposition, if you're asking, do, based on their economic level, are they more inclined to get some sort of disposition? Absolutely not. That doesn't play into it. You know, we look at the nature of the offense and the person and, you know, the criminal history and things of that sort. I mean, the, everything's an individualized decision.
Okay. It's just, it was a fascinating number to me, given that I, I, I don't notice a strong economic correlation with especially the DUI and DV world. And I, I just want to make sure that the rich people are going to get their due if we were to contract with you. The, the second question is, is that, I'm, because electeds change over time, I'm wondering what influence the county prosecutor and the sheriff have on district court programs and policies? Are they part of decision-making around those? Are they part of gathering resources or collaborating on those things?
They do collaborate with us on things like therapeutic courts. I mean, that, that's always going to come down to prosecutor discretion first, and then the judge is the other gateway to entry into those programs. But that's similar to any other therapeutic courts that you have across state when you're entering into a resolution such as that, like Judge Meyer was talking about, any stipulator or a continuance or a deferral. So, we want to keep that relationship, but a lot of it's just the engagement that the courts need to have with their justice partners. That's where it starts. So I, I do appreciate the comment that, yeah, the electeds can change. You can have other people on the seats on the other side of the table. But the intent from the courts and from the other side should always be to engage and acknowledge what those priorities are and what we want to do together to serve our communities.
Right. So I was just particularly interested, I know in the ILA language, we prioritize continuing the efforts we've made at reimagining public safety and heading towards restorative justice models as much as possible. And it's, it's conceivable that we could be strongly in conflict with a prosecutor and a sheriff. And then, if we're contracting, I'm just wondering, how would you sort that out?
Well, if it's prosecutor, it's still within Olympia, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It would be your prosecutor's...
Well, no, my question was, the, the elected county prosecutor and the elected sheriff, what, do they have interaction with the district court, with the diversion programs, the Resource Hub? Is that, that's shared, I'm assuming?
Yeah, there wouldn't be influence to the services that we provide for all of our other contracted jurisdictions, no.
Okay.
There can still be entry into those programs. Those services are extended throughout all jurisdictions, whether it be state and counties, City of Lacey, City of Tumwater. Those services are provided.
Thank you. I just, I just didn't know what influence they had on whether the programs exist. Like, do we need them as champions in order for those alternative or additional programs to exist? But it sounds like you're confident that they'll remain. And then my, my third question is about diversion, and I'm assuming, now switching back to, yes, our prosecutor, that we'll retain a prosecutor. And, and so if it's between OPD and the prosecutor about who's going to be charged, or who's going to have a pretrial diversion, is that something that each of the three cities has a separate sort of relationship? And how do, how do you work that decision of who has pretrial diversion?
Well, it, that's going to be an agreement between prosecutor and the defense attorney. And so, and then that gets presented to the court. And Olympia municipal cases will have their own calendar. And as I've said, they'll have the same prosecutor, same defense attorney. And I don't see a whole lot of the process that they have now is going to change too much.
Judge, Mr. Peters, thank you both for being here tonight. I appreciate.
Sure.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. And thank you also for being here. I really appreciate this level of detail. So I'm thinking about your mantra of the people, and how you aim to serve each individual and meet them where they are. I really appreciate that. I think it's really in alignment with the city's values and where we're coming from overall. And so, in my mind, and kind of in the lore and the community, you get, you know, your first time you have to go to the Thurston County Court, whether it's Superior or District, you drive down Capital Way, you check out two state buildings that say they're a court, and they're not. Then your friend tells you that the courthouse moved to the atrium, and you drive over there. That's not where the courthouse is, so you go back to Courthouse Hill, and, and find out that you're actually supposed to be at the Olympia Municipal Court. So, I, I think that that level of confusion, just like the judge mentioned around a move, is already present in our, in our system. There's a lot of courts here. And, and so I wonder if you could just talk about whether that's a real experience that you have. But also within that, how many people are bouncing back and forth and might be involved in the district court and the municipal court at the same time, and maybe in, in one holding facility or another, and going to the wrong court date based on what facility they got on? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. And there is a fair amount of interaction between, we see people who have ongoing cases in Olympia Municipal Court. There are people on Olympia Municipal Court, Community Court now, who are also participating in veterans or mental health court. And so there's some coexistence there. It's not uncommon for people to show up in Thurston County District and say, hey, I'm here for court. And then the clerk, front clerk say, well, you're not on the calendar. They'll look you up. Oh, you're supposed to be down in Old E Muni. And then, we've had people show up here and say, or like 45 minutes late, oh, I went to Old E Muni first. I was supposed, knew I was supposed to be here. So, I mean, that doesn't happen every day, but it, it happens enough that we would notice it. And so, and I understand the confusion. I, actually, I, I will tell this quick story, that I had a wedding here earlier this week where someone came up from Castle Rock, and I just asked him, why'd you come up from Castle Rock? Well, we were just Googling courthouses in the area. We thought the one in Olympia was really cool, so we wanted to get married in that courthouse. And they were looking at the old courthouse out on Capital Way. That's where they thought they were going. So, that, yes, it happens a lot.
So, so beyond that, like logistical confusion, is there any benefit that you can see to having those two systems of the municipal court and the district court be separate?
Well, I think that, that they'll be separate because they have separate prosecutors and separate defense attorneys, yes. I think that, just from a logistical calendaring point of view, it makes more, and the City of Lacey is that way. City of Lacey has their own, we do court services for the City of Lacey. They've retained their own prosecutors. They have separate defense attorneys. They don't work with Thurston County Public Defense. And Lacey has their own calendars. Tumwater, on the other hand, they've contracted with the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office and the Thurston County Office of Public Defense. So Tumwater and, and, and the state, they're on the same calendar because they have the same attorneys on, on both sides. But for Olympia, while they have their own, retain the prosecutor, defense attorneys, they'll have their own calendars.
So it'd be more like a core within a core?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any additional questions from counsel? Councilmember Vanderpoel.
So, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard from the public, broadly speaking, and I think I've heard a few times now, is, is, is the concern of local control and, and the city having control and then not having the control over courts. And then, so I'm going to ask the question about input particularly, right, future input such as changes in services and, and future contracts with the city. Technically speaking, how would, how would current or future councils make recommendations, if taking the contract, to add or add services such as, I'm just thinking of how we have community court, and if we wanted to add more aspects of that per se, how would we go about that, that, that process?
Go ahead.
We do it to an extent already with the City of Lacey and City of Tumwater. I'll present two city councils. I do up for City of Tumwater once a year, meet with city management. There's always opportunities to provide input at that point. I give updates on what we're doing. They provide some updates on what's going on within their cities, what we can do. We can schedule follow-up meetings. That's what we're doing right now with the other cities that are contracted with Thurston County. I also like to meet beyond just the presentation with city management outside of those presentation opportunities, just to get an idea of how the services are working, what other opportunities there are, what are the changes. I mean, there's always an opportunity to bounce ideas back and forth and what the intent is. If it comes down to a big change within the court, of course, I'm going to pass it on over to county management so they have a conversation about what that looks like from a financial perspective. But what we can do within the court, if there's ideas on efficiencies, we've always been open to those. We love making changes that can meet our community members, and if it can be done without a cost, even better.
Cool. One last question. So additionally, as we were going through all the services, you can ballpark this, but I'm very curious about the caseload on these services. If taking on Olympia, what would the, how, how would that affect the caseload compared to where it is now? Just kind of ballparking it? Response time, the, the quality of the services and so forth?
Oh, the, the services provided, that wouldn't change. The time for trial, those sort of standards, those wouldn't change based off of what was included within the ILA and the request to support those services. The time for trial in that extent wouldn't change. I know you were talking about caseload, and I immediately went to the 4,000s, 5,000s of misdemeanor filings that end up coming through, and I don't think that's what you're asking. But as far as the service level, time for trial responsiveness, if community member is trying to get ahold of the court, that would be all included within the proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, just a couple of follow-ups on a couple of Councilmember Vanderpoel's questions. One is, I mean, you'll see this in a minute. The next piece you're going to get is Debbie to give an overview of kind of where we are so far on negotiating our local agreement. And just to highlight, one of the things that Frankie talked about is built into that is an annual, at least an annual meeting with them and you and me. And I think there's some room to kind of figure out what that looks like, and how we present together, and how they get feedback. And the intent of those meetings is to get the feedback about what's working well and what needs improvement, what, what needs attention, and to get ideas for how we might continue to expand programs and the like. And then the other one, and Frankie, if I get this wrong, help me, but part of the reason that there's not a big impact based on our caseload is because we're adding additional staffing. So a big portion of our ILA is adding additional staffing so that they can take our caseload on without slowing down or bogging down the overall caseload. Fair enough?
Yes. If I could just say one additional thing, you know, we do take input from the in-court prosecutors who are actually on the ground conducting those cases as well. And I know you, you have some highly experienced prosecutors at Olympia Municipal. And so, we get suggestions from the Lacey attorneys and, like I say, the on-the-ground prosecutors from Thurston County Public Defense. And so we listen to them, too.
Thank you. So, City Manager Bernie, when you, when you talk about that, you're talking about having an additional judge? Are we talking about pro tem? How are we, what are we talking about here in terms of being able to, to support the, the growing caseload?
Right now, we have three elected judges and one full-time court commissioner. In the, in the agreement, my understanding is, there'll be hiring of another full-time court commissioner. And people in, in limited jurisdiction courts treat commissioners differently. Sometimes commissioners like only handle infractions. We don't do it that way. We're all interchangeable in terms of what we do, so there'll be a rotation. And you'll be here seeing elected judges. Olympia will more than the commissioner because there's more of them. And so commissioner is, is basically, I don't want to say just another judge, but is, is another judge. And they're all, we're all equal. We'll all be handling the same cases, and we'll all be rotating through on all the jurisdictions.
Thank you.
And at some point, I guess, at some point, that may become full-time judicial positions. As an example, you know, Judge Buckley, who's been a judge since 2006, he was a commissioner for about 10 years before then. There was only two elected judges. And then in 2006, they converted his position to a full-time judge. And so that, but, you know, for expedient sake, given the time constraints in this particular transaction, it's, it's more expedient to hire a commissioner.
Thank you. City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, I just want to continue on this. And Frankie, you may need to jump in here. So, as we look at the contingent, I think you're asking about the contingent of staffing that will be brought on board to kind of take us on. So besides a court commissioner, there's additional probation staff that are being added. And Frankie, maybe you can help me just help kind of walk through what the staffing contingent looks like that you're, that you're bringing on board as part of our discussions that help take on our caseload.
Ask me to remember the exact numbers.
Yeah, it's about 16 FTE, I believe.
I believe the support right now is going to cover, it's primary... I believe the support right now is going to cover, it's primarily probation to ensure that we can continue all the services within there. I believe that's five within our probation department. There would be two to three that would support our judicial support, so that'd be the courtroom clerks. One or two, I believe, that are customer support. And then, there are two management-level roles there as well. Those ones are primarily just because the expanded services and the number of staff that we have to ensure that we have good support for all of our staff and the resources that they need to be successful as well.
Thank you, Frankie. Commissioner Mahia.
Thank you. Hi, Commissioner Carolina Mahia. I appreciate the time that you've given District Court to come in and talk about some of their programs. And I just wanted to say, you know, kind of on behalf of the commission, we would love to have Community Court. When we did the Resource Hub, it was really inspiration, we got inspiration from the Community Court and expanding that. I think there's a lot of synergy, and it's a conversation that the county is willing to have. And, you know, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the court and their capacity, but it is definitely something that the board is interested in. And, you know, I'm like, when I'm listening to this, it's like, why can't we expand it to not just the city of Olympia? Community Court is great, and it would be a great benefit to so many people across the county as well. And I wanted to also touch on just the synergy with contracting with District Court. And looking at your priority at the beginning, which is, you know, individuals who are connecting repeatedly with law enforcement and our criminal justice system, and really thinking of the synergy there. And one of the things that is happening currently is, I like to call it the ping-pong effect. And so, as there are people, many of our people who are coming through our criminal justice systems have matters in both District Court and Olympia Municipal Court. And as if a defendant is being held, let's say, at Niskwali, but they also have a matter in a hearing at District Court, then District Court will issue a warrant, you know, and someone will get released, you know, for probation at, from Niskwali. But then, they'll get, you know, arrested, and they'll end up at the Thurston County jail, and then they'll miss their probation date, and then they'll have another warrant from Olympia Municipal Court. And so, you know, really, it's about the people and the community that we're serving and the benefits of that. I also want to talk about the synergy when it comes to the communication between our public defense attorneys as well as our prosecutors. And having, many of our matters are, you know, we have a prosecutor from Olympia and as well as a prosecutor from Thurston County who are representing, or a public defense, not from the county as well as the city of Olympia, who are representing the same individual. And that synergy of having maybe people in that same courtroom being able to solve two different matters in one, in one day. So, there was, solving cases in a quicker matter, I think, is also very important. So, we are, you know, I know you're faced with very difficult decisions. We are looking forward to continuing conversations, and, you know, we make ourselves available to you if you have any questions or you think of anything later, just feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I guess I'll just say this. The elephant in the room, I mean, you kind of hear us alluding to it in our line of questioning, which is, is that there is, there is a, I guess you could call it a belief or a concern that the county is not as forward-thinking or progressive, for lack of a better term, as the city of Olympia is, right? In terms of jail alternative services. And that's a concern that, you know, going into these deliberations, we wanted to really dig in on right away. I'm looking at a list of the services that you provide at the county compared to the city of Olympia, the vast majority of the services that you offer, whether it be in jail alternatives, pre-trial services, probation, the probation department, therapeutic courts, social services, all of which the vast majority are, those services exist at the county. They may be to a different degree than we have here, perhaps greater or lesser, but overwhelmingly, most of the services that exist here at the city, you have at the county. And I know that many people are concerned about us losing that local control because we value equity in this process of making sure that people are treated fairly and that there is some oversight of ensuring that that is occurring. For me, I know that as we form our inter-local agreement, and I believe Debbie, you're going to talk about that next, but the language that's in there is, in the draft, inter-local agreement is very important because it essentially binds us, or at least to a commitment, that those services that you don't have currently, that you're at least open to us continuing to build upon what you do have in order to get to a place perhaps where the city of Olympia is. I will say that our neighboring jurisdictions, Lacey, Tumwater, they do services with you. I personally have not heard any concerns from either jurisdiction about the services that they receive from you, particularly with Lacey, who has an equity commission, who I'm sure, if there was a grave concern, I'm sure we would have heard something by now in that regard. We have not, or at least I have not. I do, it's very important to me that the language in inter-local agreement stresses the importance of reimagining public safety, that it articulates the willingness to grow beyond what you're providing. So then, that way, we do maintain some sense of control over what's happening, which I'm hearing from both of you. There seems to be some agreement and alignment there as well from the commissioner. So, I, I know that this is a tough decision for me, but I also see, I see tremendous value in moving towards regionalization. And I also will say that, I don't want to put this necessarily out there for everyone to hear, but my understanding is, is that if we ask you as the county to provide this service to us, you have to at least entertain the request. And you have to, you know, help us get to a place where you're able to provide those services. And I wanted to say that because this isn't about the county trying to do some sort of money grab or, you know, something like that for you to, you know, there is no significant benefit to you by having us move over toward you. So, I do look forward to further conversations with council about what we do next, and I thank the three of you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for having us. Sure.
And I'll turn it back over to Debbie.
Thank you. It's been a long night tonight. I just have one more section to go over, and that is the negotiations and the language that we have in the inter-local agreement. That was the direction you gave me on April 22nd, and we have accomplished that work. So, our city staff and our legal teams in both the county have drafted an inter-local agreement, and I want to share the highlights. So, first and foremost, the agreement was shaped by the city's reimagining public safety goals adopted by council in December 2022. It speaks to the commitment by both the city and the county to balance compassion and accountability through the expansion of restorative justice programs and evidence-based courts, as well as our mutual desire to provide progressive alternatives and community support through pre-trial and probation service opportunities. The purpose of the agreement is to provide all court services for all criminal cases and infractions, requiring a hearing as well as progressive alternatives and supervised probation. The term is July 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2026. The agreement states that the county will complete a comprehensive rate study before this agreement expires. In conversations with the county, their intent is to complete it as soon as possible so it can inform our 2027 budget. This is also in alignment with other contracts the county has that are expiring at the same time. To extend the contract, the city must give notice to the county no later than October 1st, 2026. At that time, the city and county will negotiate new terms. If an agreement can't be reached, we can either go to arbitration, or we can mutually extend the period to continue negotiating or intermediation to resolve any outstanding issues. Regarding, where am I at? Okay. I'm missing a slide. I'm good here. Okay. Regarding the scope of services, it of course includes case processing and management. It also states progressive alternatives, supervised probation, and other services specifically mentioned is veterans court, mental health court, or other therapeutic courts. And I just want to highlight that that language is in there and agreed to by both staff and our legal department, so I think that opens up the opportunity for further conversations. The county will provide an annual report on the services provided and specifically report on enrollment in veterans and mental health or other court-offered programs. File management retention, a little boring, but really important. The agreement requires the county to provide 60 days' advance notice if any of the services in the agreement change. And the intent of that is to give us an opportunity to be in conversation with them about what would it take to continue these services if this is something that we want. And Frankie had mentioned too, talking to the county administrator, and that is because they are in negotiation regarding the cost of these programs. So, finally, the city and county will meet annually at a minimum to discuss goals and collaborate to identify strategies on how to move forward with progressive alternative programs and services to advance the city's reimagining public safety goals. Regarding the cost for services, these are the same as what I presented on April 22nd. The staffing is based on 17 FTEs. These numbers reflect a start date of January 1st, 2026, but depending on when the transition occurs, those amounts will be prorated. Regarding the one-time tenant improvements, the county provided, when we were in this early stages, provided a planning level estimate. And those planning level estimates, of course, are just that, they're not completely designed. They gave us a planning level estimate of $640,000 for tenant improvements. They're currently seeking bids so they can finalize that number, and I anticipate receiving that final cost in any time now. So, I believe that number will fluctuate, but I can't tell you what that number is. Finally, this agreement can be terminated. So, we need to provide written notice to the county one year before February 1st of the year District Court judges are subject to an election. I called to find out when they're up for election, and it is in 2026. The city can only terminate at the end of the four-year District Court judicial term. And if the county wants to terminate, they notify the Administrative Office of the Courts not less than one year before the agreement expires. So, that is what I have for the highlights of the inter-local agreement.
Thank you, Debbie. Any questions for the assistant city manager?
With that, I'll turn it over to you before my final discussion slide.
Okay. Councilmember Green.
Hi, Debbie. I just have a comment. I just wanted to thank you. This has been a tremendous amount of work, not just, I know this has been a longer conversation, but I was reflecting on that April 22nd date, and we asked some pretty complicated questions. And so, I just really appreciate you and your staff and the court staff who took the time to seek out some of those answers. So, I definitely, for me, feel like I am much more well-informed at this point than I was at that April discussion, so just appreciate that work.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to invite forward our municipal court judge Pam Nagara for a response to the presentation she heard tonight. So, I thank the judge again for attending and coming to provide your thoughts on our presentation tonight.
So, do I get an hour of your time too? I don't think so, do I?
No, Judge.
Unfortunately, I'm not a presenter, which is part of the reason why there's so many feelings associated with today.
Yes, Judge.
I understand, I have five minutes.
Yes, and just for a moment, the reason that you don't have the time is because the council directed staff to have a study session for the assistant city manager to provide response to us.
And it's very interesting because city management has been, whom has been vetoing so much of our communication and who has been preventing us from communicate with everybody, with architects, with providing you with information, with requesting to provide you with information.
Yes.
So, there's been a lot of emotions about today.
At our direction from the city manager.
Well, that's very unfortunate.
Yes.
Because our intention as the court has always been to collaborate, to provide you with every information you need to make this decision. And unfortunately, sometimes, or most of the time, we have not had a seat at the table, just like today. So, I do have a lot of thoughts, but I want to start by saying that still, you don't have all of the information. Thankfully, I had an opportunity of meeting with the architects prior to today and see numbers that were presented, not just 1.5 million, but the breakdown. How did you become to this number? Numbers that I've requested from city management staff six different times have never received, still haven't. So, today, I presented you with a binder because I knew I wouldn't be given a voice. So, my hope is that you will review that binder, and you will have some information. Because the reality is, this has nothing to do with District Court. District Court is fabulous. We have never said a bad word about District Court. This is about the fact that we need to decide what is best for Olympia. And this is what I do. I only serve Olympia. This is my job. I look at Olympia, Olympia's residents, Olympia's needs, Olympia's budget. So, when I look as to why you should keep Olympia, I say it is because of values, and it's because of your long-term budget needs. When you look at 101 State, I totally agree with Councilmember Gilman, and I, with all due respect, Bill, but I don't love what we've just saw today. A lot of those renovations are things that we don't currently have. We use keys to open the door. We don't have badges. I have a hanger behind, in front of the door to where I put my robe on. I walk outside from court services and walk into the courtroom. Are those situations ideal, best practices? No, but they're still worth having a third branch of government. So, when I ask you to review these options, comparing not just with what state-of-the-art courts look like, but to what we have, to how much we offer this community with what we have. Right now, we have six defense attorneys, one that comes into the courtroom. All six appear remotely to all hearings. Do we need four booths that are phenomenally, they're great, they truly are great, but do we need them? No, one tiny meeting room would more than suffice. We don't ever have more than two attorneys in the courtroom, ever. If you simply scanned every person that came into this room, like at Tacoma Justice Center, for instance, that they scan people coming in through two doors- for instance, that they scan people coming in through two doors, and the other two doors are exits, you would meet all of the legal standards, you wouldn't mess with the lobby, you wouldn't mess with your capacity shape. We've been willing to collaborate with calendars to only be here in the morning and give you the afternoons. We all share the same outlook, we can share a calendar to organize space and when this is occupied by whom. Very simple, we already have that in place. As far as jurors go, we honestly have maybe three jury trials a year. It's very easily to accommodate. We can simply manage that. If not, we, those are all movable chairs, we can relocate chairs, we can move things. We don't care if you have a late night, we can replace, a lot of the things that are going to be here are going to be on either wheels or movable chairs that can be easily relocated by staff. We don't currently have secured parking or anything special. We have space for about 30 to 35 seats as it is in our courtroom, we don't need more than that. The numbers that I had seen included about, with regards to 108 first, about $1.5 million that would take to renovate 108 regardless of what use you put in, just because that building needs renovation, just to be code compliant. So to do anything with that building, you start at that. To renovate just the second floor, which would mean you would have to do that no matter what, if you keep public defense and prosecution, then you're looking at 3.6 million. If you include us, then that number goes up to 6.2. But the reality is, you would be spending 3.6 no matter what. So it's really the difference that you're looking as to what the cost of keeping the court is, which is $2.6 billion. And I've talked to Bill that there's a lot of things that we don't need that are part of that $2.6 billion that we're willing to cut back and make sense of it. But again, I haven't quite been able to make with Bill and tell him what our needs are since this project changed from the town center space. And then with regards to this council chambers, we've talked a lot about it, too, and the numbers provided by Bill were not even $350,000. So again, you're looking at most worst-case scenarios without us making any cuts, which we're very much willing to do, $2.9 million, and that's rounding those numbers up. So then let's talk about the proposal from the county. The proposal that we had from the county had, on just between 2025 and 2026, had you spending $6,164,000. Our budget is about 2.5, which means that in 2026 alone, you paid more, you paid above our budget, 3.6 mil, which is more and above than what the renovations would cost to keep us. So in one year, you made that difference. One year. You lose control of your financial decisions, you lose all of our programs, and in one year, you would have made that back. We offer a lot of things, and part of this binder that I put together for you is the analysis of the reimagining public safety and all that we offer to comply with that project. Because when I started, I asked for a copy. That happened before I took office, but I heard of it, I knew of it, and I wanted to make sure that we were at the forefront of that project. And I'm there to show you all of the efforts that we've made. In fact, one of the reasons why we audited Community Court is because reimagining public safety, how do you want a therapeutic court, which is a treatment court, a best practices court? And that's what we did. All that we do is to serve this community the best way possible. And we do have our community advisory board, because we do want our community input. We also do our team meeting quarterly. We have a provider meeting quarterly so that we know exactly what our providers offer, and we ensure that there's no gaps in services. We also do the water, because it's part of best practices. And again, we make sure that we check every box. Beyond that, we have our program audit every 18 months to make sure, again, that we are complying and we are doing the best we can by our community. This council has spent almost $500,000 already in architects and holding a lease, a Vine Street or town center, in considering relocation. So not only is moving us to District Court more expensive, it would also be a waste of those $500,000 already spent. Again, I put a lot of information into that binder, because again, I knew my time would be limited. But I just wanted to say, we do offer very similar services, right? As a small municipal court, we get to have more into the community. So for instance, we offer life skills classes, and we partner with community members to come and teach, from local bank branches to Olympia, Pure Olympia, and things of that sort. And we invite District Court to come, and we invite Superior Court to come. We have a restorative justice program. Those are things that are unique to us, and that truly, really completes the circle in everything that we do for this community. Next Wednesday, we have a resource fair, and it's going to be a warrant forgiveness at 1:00, and then from 2:00 to 4:00, there's going to be a multitude of providers there for the community. Along with that, weirdly enough, we're bringing True Self, which is a yoga studio, and it's a multipurpose. One is to provide a mindfulness breeding for folks that are in crisis for mental health, but to so many others is also to see a courtroom as a yoga studio, as a place of healing and not a place of trauma. Everything that we do, again, is for Olympia, thinking of Olympia residents. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I truly do hope you look at those binders, because I've spent so many hours, and I will probably have permanent markers in my fingers for a month as a result of preparing them. I'm a little passionate about this court, if you couldn't tell. And that's because in the past 18 months, I've given my blood and soul to this place. And I so appreciate the efforts of Judge Meyer and Frankie Peters. I know my staff contacts you, Frankie, all the time for support. And Sam and I are in many committees together through the DMCJA, very passionate about the fair as well. I'm the advisory board now for that project. Again, lots of good things happening out there. It's not because I'm fighting for Olympia that I'm dissing District Court. That's not what that's about. But for the simple fact that they serve Lacey, Tamwater, and Rainier, we can't all agree to all of the same services all the time. And when we disagree, then what happens? Compromises are reached. As at an Olympia Municipal Court, you get no compromises. You get my soul-body tears all the time, from 4:00 in the morning most days until 4:00 in the afternoon. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Judge Nagara? Seeing none. Judge, I thank you for coming tonight, and I thank you for sharing this information with us, and obviously, your passion. I know that it's not just your passion, but you come with a lot of people behind you who value our municipal court. And I said it before in the previous meeting, that this isn't an easy decision, and we valued them in municipal court as well. And this is not a conversation about whether or not we do, but whether we have the appropriate steps to take in regards to the long-term budget sustainability of the city. And so for those who are listening and watching tonight, I encourage you to pay very close attention to our presentations and our meetings and discussions on the long-term budget sustainability of the city of Olympia, because you will see a much broader picture that goes beyond the discussions around funding for the municipal court and court services. So, thank you, Judge, and I'll turn it back over to our Assistant City Manager, Debbie Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one more slide, and that is to open it up for discussion. And one thing that staff is seeking is wanting to make sure that the questions that were raised at April 22nd council meeting that have been fully answered and addressed, and then also seeking direction about whether staff should continue negotiations with Thurston County for an interlocal agreement, and bringing it back to you for consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, we're open for discussion. Any questions or comments for the Assistant City Manager? Councilmember Gilman.
So I very much appreciate the research and work that you did, and I'm still really challenged of wanting this space to work and having a hard time making the puzzle fit without giving up another bill. Like if we took the armory to be the multi-purpose space that staff events and community meetings happened in here, well, then the arts organizations don't have that. So it's just, it's the domino sort of thing. That's where I'm really challenged, that it, I think it's super challenging to continue the same use of this room and of the lobby while having the service court, and that's where I'm just kind of stuck. I'd love to make that work, but I can't imagine without giving up another city-owned facility to become our large meeting room that we could do it. And yeah, that's what I'm wrestling with.
Councilmember Green.
I'll just go really straightforward to your questions. For me, all of the questions that I had following the April meeting have been answered, so I appreciate that. There's still a lot to wrestle with, for sure, but I would love to see us continue with conversations of dialing in the ILA.
Additional comments, questions? Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I'm in the same place as Councilmember Green and Councilmember Gilman both. I mean, frankly, the thing that bothers me the most is that we're talking about offices in 108 State at all, like our beautiful historic building that we know has at least a couple of higher best uses that our community wants. So I hope even if we do get to an interlocal agreement, that we can find a way to lease space, office space, the Class A office space that we need somewhere else than in that city facility, because it's just not a good use of that building to me, nor do I believe that the broader community would like to see that historical use. But I also think the community would understand, as long as we tell them the financial story that brought us here, and I think that's the challenge. The passion and dedication of our staff and employees in the court with this capital facilities conundrum, that's just not, not an easy one to solve, and in a time and place where we're, I would guess that we have a unfunded $100 million of capital facility needs easily across the city. And I just keep going back to every single time I've doorbell this town, and the core value of our community is actually regionalization of government services. And I know that's difficult and hard, but I have full faith in the district court, and I think they do a great service to the broader community. And I think when we bring 50% of the budget and 50% of the caseload, we'll have a fair bit of power in that conversation and the ongoing outcomes of the court. So I'd love to see the next level of negotiations.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Vanderpoel.
So I'm glad some of my questions have been answered. I'm glad that, and I'm glad that there'll be a point in the ILA to have a yearly check-in, make sure that we're meeting our needs, meeting the needs of the city, because reimagining public safety is like the most concerning thing I would hear from people when they're not sure about this, right? Is making sure that all the work we've done along reimagining public safety makes it into the changes and expands on that. And so I want to continue to explore the ILA.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I just forgot one thing, and that's, I spoke as to where I am at the moment, but for me, the most difficult part about this decision will be how it will translate to employees that would like to go to work at the county. And I need to see those numbers before I can make a decision. Like that is a very difficult and complex situation for quite a few people, and it needs to be on par.
Fair enough. Additional questions, comments for the Assistant City Manager? Mayor Potemwin.
I should have raised my hand first, but I was like, I'm speaking. Thank you so much. Thank you for all of your work. I know you, if you were to respond right now, you'd say, well, it was a team effort, da-da-da-da. Yeah, I know, it was a team effort. I know. And also, it was a big effort on your part, and it's, you know, it's a strange feeling in the room for me right now. There's, you know, I'm hearing some kind of conflicting information. Also, you know, anyone that's still sitting here really cares about this, one way or the other. And for your question of have all of the, have all of the questions been answered as of the April questions that we had on the 22nd, I believe? For me, they have been. I, of course, have not been able to take a look at this, so maybe I will have more questions after it. I really appreciate all that you've done before the April meeting, and then at the April meeting, we asked a lot of questions. We asked you to reach out to court staff that weren't Olympia or County, that people from other jurisdictions that came here, and you did that. And we asked you to make sure that court staff were included in this, even though there were efforts beforehand, I understand, to include folks, and I believe that you did do that, and your team did do that. I really respect the professionals that have been working on this. I understand, Bill from KMB, that you are, you know, I heard you, and I even asked beforehand and had discussions with staff, like, okay, like, you know, who are these people and what their expertise is? We even got a, well, probably by the city manager's pull, but got a highly respected, once-retired engineer back and working all of this. And I really believe that this is thorough and that this is really good work. And I also saw, it was actually a little bit too bad for me that the, I had asked for, and I think maybe others, but a side-by-side comparison of the municipal court services and then the county court services, and I saw, as the mayor had said, I saw a lot of places where the district court does provide many of the same services, a majority of the same services, and also, in some areas, they provided more, is my understanding. I know this has been something of interest in the community. I appreciate, I know we were, we were, met last time with, for example, the Thurston County chapter of the NAACP. I appreciate the mayor and city manager meeting with them and bringing the sort of, I guess, draft ILA forward and providing an opportunity to give feedback and to make sure, I think their biggest thing was to make sure that reimagining public safety was present throughout that document. I feel really encouraged that Commissioner Mahia came forward and also shared what county court professionals did, which was that they are, you know, would be excited to look into Community Court and to share it with the rest of the county residents. And so it's a hard one tonight, and I know there's many feelings in the room, and there's... and there's, you know, people's livelihoods involved in this. And I appreciate Councilmember Cooper also, you know, bringing that back up again is like, you know, let's make sure as much as we can about the employees. And I don't think it's necessarily going to get any easier, but I do think that we should keep going and keep negotiating an ILA. And I look forward to what you bring back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? I, thank you, Debbie. I appreciate all of the work that has been done in a very short period of time. The April 22nd meeting, we threw a lot of questions at you, questions that honestly, we didn't even know we were going to ask. We just, there was a lot of information coming at us and we said, yeah, what about this, what about that, what about this, what about that? And we directed you to get to work, and you have done that thoroughly. And that's why we're here tonight, having a special study session on a Thursday. And then council has our mid-year retreat tomorrow and it's getting late and we'll be right back here in the morning. But I do feel that, you know, the questions that we had at that meeting on the 22nd have been answered by you and several of our presenters tonight. I've said it before that this isn't an easy decision, but we do need to look at the long-term budget sustainability. And I keep saying that because that is what's driving so much of what we're hearing tonight. This isn't about whether or not we value the court. This isn't about us just wanting to do something different or having someone else help us with other city services. This is about the budget driving a lot of this decision. And we don't have that $50 to $90 million for a new facility as we discussed at the April 22nd meeting. We're hearing these smaller numbers like 1.5 million and 2 million, but we're projecting, again, we're looking out. This isn't about these short-term, small amounts of money. So I encourage our community members to follow these meetings and follow those presentations about those dollars. I want to say something that I think is important. I feel like sometimes when we mention reimagining in the context of what we do here and what is done at the county, we talk about reimagining as if we have done reimagining, as if the city of Olympia has achieved it and we've hit all our initiatives and goals, and we have not. There is a lot of work that still needs to happen with reimagining public safety for the city of Olympia. And so frankly, you know, the move to the county, that is another evolution, if you will, of the work that needs to happen here as well. And so I do just want to provide that perspective that there's a lot of work that still needs to happen with reimagining public safety here at the city also. I want to thank the municipal court judge and staff for providing the information, working with Debbie to be able to present this information tonight. I know that you've all been willing to be partners, to come to the table, to figure out a way to see what we can do to make this work. And Judge, I've heard you in the past make a commitment that you will do everything that you can and you will fight to the end, but you will do everything that you can to make sure that what we do here is a smooth and transition that's in line with our values and that that takes place at the county. And I thank you for that commitment as well. But I feel as if, you know, this decision tonight is not an easy one, but if I'm being honest, the presentation we heard earlier about using the council chambers, whether or not that $1.5 million broken down by line item, you know, is, for me, it's, it comes down to fundamentally changing the way that we do things here in the council chambers and at City Hall. And it's just not something that I can see as a long-term solution for us, for future councils, for future staff members, for people who will be dealing with that, who won't be, who aren't here tonight, who will have to deal with those decisions that we make in that regard. And I just don't think it's something that works long-term. And so for me, you know, I guess I'm showing my hand, but it's no secret that I'm supportive of moving forward with an interlocal agreement. So again, I just want to thank everybody who came tonight for sharing your passion, your care and your concern for our court and the people who receive the services from it. Thank you for being here to present all of the information and all of the work that you've done. So if there are no further questions, it is getting late. So with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.